Good evening. Thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight for our regular School Board Directors meeting. My name is Julie Boca Negra, School Board Chair, and I would like to call the meeting to order and first take a roll call to confirm the attendees. Director Victoria Bradford?
Here.
Director Rob Perkins?
Here.
Director Jenny Gronwald?
Here.
Director Rachel Rogers?
Here.
Superintendent Mike Merlino?
Here.
Administrative Assistant Lori Stroll. Thank you. Good evening. The time is now 5:36 and under Governor Inslee's proclamation 2028, in response to the COVID-19 outbreak, temporary suspends portions of Open Public Meeting Act. The proclamation requires that all attendance at an open public meeting not take place in person but occur remotely, including the board directors and the public. Our meeting this evening is conducted via Zoom audio webinar. At this time, I would like to recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Again, our first order of business this evening is to adopt our agenda. Can we entertain a motion to adopt the agenda?
Move we adopt the agenda as it's been presented?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye through roll call. Aye for me, Victoria?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Perfect. Thank you. Next on our agenda is information, and I do believe we have a special guest presenter. Mayor McInerney Ogilvy is going to join us this evening to address the board. Lori, do you know if the mayor is available? She's not signed in yet. Okay, so I think what we'll do, if everybody is okay with this, is we could move forward to do we do our board consent agenda, or should we do matters reserved for more action first?
Julie, I think we should probably do the reorganization before the consent agendas.
That's in matters reserved for board action is the board reorganization, and the next would be the elementary boundary committee changes. So do you think we should go ahead and start with the reorganization? Until the mayor is able to join us? Okay, let's do it. All right. So next on the agenda, matters reserved for board action, board reorganization. This is our election of president, vice president, and legislative representative. And kind of some background information. Each year, our first meeting in December, we reorganize our board officers. It usually coincides with the school board elections. This year, there was no school board election, but we still do a reorganization each year and elect new officers. So with that being said, I guess I will open up the discussion with the board on who may be interested in fulfilling these roles or what direction we want to go in. So I know that I have been the board chair, the board president, the last couple of years, and it may be time to let and have somebody else take the reins for a bit, so. I guess we'll start with the board president.
Are we opening nominations?
We, yeah, open nominations or discussion around it.
Well, I'd like to nominate and or suggest that Victoria Bradford serves as board chair during the next year.
Okay, so nomination for Victoria Bradford. Do we have a second?
I second.
Okay, so Victoria has been presently working as the vice president. So I guess we can open it up for discussion. Or Victoria, do you accept the nomination?
I would accept the nomination. Thank you.
Yeah, so I guess we can open up for discussion. I guess I would just say Victoria has been working in that role of vice president the last couple of years. And so it seems like a natural progression for this year for her to move up into that role, so I would be supportive of that. Plus, she's very experienced. Maybe can see us through the next bit of turbulence here until we can get back to some normalcy.
Can we end the turbulence?
Well, I don't know.
It will stop.
Unprecedented times. Is that what we like to refer to it as, right?
Is that part of your platform, Victoria, ending the turbulence?
Yeah. Blowing things down, taking it easy.
Any other discussion?
Just as I've always had confidence in Victoria's leadership, the years when she's been leading board president, and then her experience speaks volumes to me. Which is why I suggested it.
Then she's obviously done it a number of times before in the past. Probably so many, they've forgotten the count. So I guess with that said, should we go ahead and take a vote?
Are there any other nominations?
All right, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye. It's an aye for me. Victoria?
I guess it's an aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
And Rachel?
Aye.
Great. Congratulations, Victoria. You're president now. So I'm going to turn it over to you to take on the other, the next role of vice president.
Okay, well, let's see what we can do about that. Okay, is there any discussion before we take nominations for the position of vice president?
Well, I don't know if discussion, but I would say that I have been thinking that Jenny, it might be time for Jenny to step into one of these roles, and I think she would do a great job, and she's been more involved at the equity work that we've been on as of recent and worked with WASDA some in the past, and so I think this would be a great opportunity for her. So I think I'll just go ahead and nominate Jenny Gronwald for vice president.
I'll second the nomination.
Thank you. Jenny?
I guess I accept.
Okay, you're willing to take that position?
I have a good mentor.
Okay, well, then, let's take a vote on that nomination of Jenny Gronwald for vice president. Julie?
Aye.
Rob?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
I'm an aye. Rachel?
Aye.
Okay, great. I appreciate. It's going to be fun working closer with you this year. And I think you're going to be great.
Thank you. I look forward to it.
Next up is our legislative rep, and just for the audience, I think it's important that they understand the importance of the role that our legislative representative makes for the board. It's a pretty time-intensive position in that that person, and Rob's been doing that for us the last couple of years and doing a great job, meets with our legislators both here and up in Olympia when things are open up there, and keeps the board abreast of what's going on legislatively, helps lobby for things that we feel are important for our district. It's been we've been a very consistent district to really work with our legislators, and so it's important that we have someone in that position that really knows how to work with other people. So I thank Rob for all your service the last couple of years in that role because you've done a really good job.
Thank you. I appreciate hearing that kind of thing. Really really helps, and it's very encouraging. It is hard work.
Do we have any other discussion about who we feel should take that position this year?
Well, I want to just add that Rob also has not, he's obviously been doing a great job representing our board, but he's been representing our entire region with the Washington State School Board Association. Is it going on three years now, Rob, or? I don't know. It feels like you've been doing it a long time.
Ever since Naive Nichols of Battleground said my name in that conference meeting, I guess it's three years now, yeah. This is, this is going to be the beginning of the board.
Yeah, it makes sense that the work kind of coincides with that, and I agree with Victoria. You've done a fantastic job.
Thank you. Thank you.
I would like to nominate Rob to continue on as the legislative representative.
I would second.
Well, I'll accept the nomination.
Great. Thank you, Rob. Okay, well, I'd like to take a vote. I'm an absolute yay on that one. Julie?
Aye.
Rachel?
Aye.
Jenny?
Aye.
And Rob?
Aye.
Okay, it looks like we've got you for another year doing the hard stuff. Thank you, Rob, for taking this on because it's really important work, and we're glad you do it so well. Okay.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
All right. There's one other position I'm going to just go ahead and bring up, even though it's not technically an elected position. But this last year, I've been working with Julie as the vice president, but I also have been the board liaison to the to the foundation, the Evergreen School District Foundation, which has actually been pretty enjoyable until COVID hit. But I'm just, would like to know if there's anybody on the board that would like to take that role over. You meet once a month. It's an evening meeting on a Wednesday. Not too long. It's, it's really not a hard position to do. Is there anybody here that would like to take that on this year?
So are they meeting virtually right now?
They're meeting virtually right now. Yeah. Yeah. Well, think if there's nobody who wants to do it right now, why don't we talk about this again? And if anybody has any questions about what it entails, I can fill you in on that.
Yeah, I wouldn't, I don't think I would mind. I've done it before in the past. I don't think I would mind doing it again. I just think I need to figure out a couple of things on my schedule first before I would, before I commit to it.
Okay. Rachel, what about you?
I would wonder, I'd want to talk to you about what it entails.
Okay, we can talk about that.
With what you, what you do in that capacity, so.
Yeah, I'll, I'll reach out. We'll talk about it so that you know and see if you're interested. Okay, great. Well, that's I think that's everything we need for the board reorganization. Do we have the mayor with us yet, Lori?
She has joined us.
Yeah, we do.
Okay, good. I can't see her, so. Well, good. Well, I would like to welcome Vancouver's most popular mayor, McInerney Ogilvy, and we welcome you to address the board with some news I think you have for us.
Yes, thank you, Victoria, and congratulations on your new responsibilities. Good evening, directors. Thank you so very much for the opportunity to address you this evening. I'm sorry I was late. I just came back from Ridgefield School District, so we made the presentation for them. The city of Vancouver is leading an effort to expand broadband infrastructure and services across Clark County, and the effort is supported by different cities, ports, our businesses, business associations and such. But Clark Public Utilities has also been involved in this conversation as we are all looking on how to proceed with this idea. In November, the Vancouver City Council adopted a resolution that would formally request Clark Public Utilities to perform a study of feasibility for improving broadband throughout Clark County. And so we're out and about talking with the community, asking agencies for their support to make a presentation to Clark Public Utilities in January. So this effort actually started with the Greater Vancouver Chamber of Commerce members when they were discussing legislative priorities. And you, of course, know that the chamber involves businesses and schools and healthcare providers and public entities and nonprofits and such. But they all identified access to affordable, high-speed internet as a legislative priority and as a challenge to their organization and all the people who depend on them, whether it's students or workers or patients or service providers and such. But access to high-speed internet, as you know, is probably more important now than we've ever thought. With all of your students working remotely, all our employees working remotely and such. And it's that real and urgent need to this access that kind of brought everything forward and identifying our most vulnerable populations, if you will, the children, the elderly, low income, our marginalized communities. You probably have students that I get phone calls and emails from thinking that I control everything in their life. They have no internet access, and those who do have access may be using satellites or hotspots that they've checked out from the library, varying degrees of reliability. But there's a strong interest right now in Clark Public Utilities as a broadband infrastructure provider. The PUD is the right entity for all of this because it has the power under Washington state law to own and operate open access broadband infrastructure because they are trusted. And I don't know how many awards they've received. They are the essential utilities of Clark County families and businesses and agencies and everyone. But in the state of Washington, PUDs are authorized to sell wholesale telecommunications services. Now, they can't be the internet service providers, but they can level that playing field, if you will, when it comes to providing access to that infrastructure. They can sell wholesale access to the ISPs and then let them make those connections from the internet to the end user. So you know the benefits. It would increase our regional digital equity across all of our different areas, better jobs, education, kind of bringing up more economic equity, regional competitiveness, healthcare. Think of all of the doctors that are going through the internet now. But the first steps to all of this is to learn whether or not this approach and future investments are really viable. And so that's why the city of Vancouver is asking Clark Public Utilities to perform a study. It examines the feasibility of expanding broadband and access across Clark County, not just for the unserved, but for the underserved. You know how difficult it is with one family, parents working at home, and children trying to stay on task with their iPads or laptops or whatever. So the city is asking for your support and resolution. We expect to make a presentation to Clark PUD boards and commissioners in January. The resolution is not binding. It's simply requesting them to perform a feasibility study, and we're going to be pitching in money to help with that, but we were hoping that you would consider the request. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Um, Mayor McInerney Ogilvy, I appreciate you bringing this subject up. I'm aware of, just anecdotally, there is a teacher friend of mine who was setting up work, a work from home situation for the prep work that she has to do, who has, I think, 400 or 500 kilobits upstream. That's 1998 levels of internet connectivity, and she could never teach a class from her home. She has to come into Covington in order to teach there. And that's out in the rural areas, but I'm also aware that even there are circumstances where even Evergreen School District is underserved by the different the different offerings possible. I was, I was told this week while taking a different technical demonstration that a major internet service provider in the area didn't even bid on business access for our three new schools.
And
That's where we're, Harry, director, and that's why I'm in the office tonight because I can't get it, and I'm just up the street on a neighborhood. So I'm not unserved, but like many of your families, we're underserved.
Right, and it would be beneficial to everybody to get some really robust fast connections into the regions where the underservice is taking place. That will, that will go, I'm just entirely in support of the idea of feasibility study, but also just personally in support of greater access in a recognition as a former telecom employee and a software developer that it hasn't grown the way that they told us it would be growing when they began offering internet service in 1997. It's time to finish out those last miles. So I'm hoping the PUD can help us all.
I would concur with that, Rob. I think even recently, we received a letter from a family with a student, a union high school, that's had lots of difficulties with internet. And I know that our, our neighbor to the north in Battleground, they've always had the issues. And, you know, not only we want to make sure our students in Evergreen are served, but we also have an obligation to students throughout the entire state to make sure that, you know, every student has equal access and opportunities, and so I would definitely support the study.
There are wide, this widespread interest in the legislature and among the state letter groups for education for exactly this kind of thing. I know it's on Senator Wellman's radar as the sort of P through 12 committee in the Senate over education, and she continues to ask us for data about who's being served and who's not. WASDA, the School Directors Association, is preparing and submitting that data to her in the format that she needs in order to stump for this as a statute, so that there could be enhanced statutory opportunities. It may be enhanced authority.
Rachel, any thoughts?
Yeah, I kind of would echo what Rob's been saying and Julie as well. I'm just thank you, Mayor, for coming in and addressing this with us. I do appreciate you taking the time.
Thank you so very much. I know you have protocols on all of that. I'll head over to the Ctran meeting where we're discussing ripping up mill plane, putting in conduit and fiber optics to give a spine all the way out in through your district, so we'll be helping you. Thank you so very much for the opportunity.
Thank you.
It is so good to see you.
Yes, it's nice to have a visitor in our lonely world these days. Okay, great. That's awesome. What an important thing to be doing for our county and our city and our district. It's, it's a good thing.
So we would work on that resolution and bring it next to the first meeting in January for the board to consider and approve to support that movement.
All right, that's perfect. Thanks, Mike. Okay, so now we go down to other reserved for board action, and this is our discussion regarding elementary boundary committee changes proposal. This is a first reading. We've workshopped this, and now's time for public review and comment. Is
Scott should be participant. Scott can speak to this a little bit.
Yeah, I'm here. Thank you very much. Well, as just a quick recap for folks, this work, this time stems from the 2018 construction bond, and the district has been very blessed with the support of our community that is resulting at the elementary level in the opening of one brand-new elementary school and the rebuilding of a handful of others. And in leading that work as part of phase two of that process, which is tied to the construction schedule for the newly rebuilt buildings, we formed a parent committee in November and December of 2019 involving parents at that time from five of our elementary schools, Ellsworth, Furcrest, Marion, Riverview, and Fisher's Landing. And over the course of the timeframe from December of 2019 until April of 2020, that parent committee got together five or six different times, established group norms and guiding principles, and worked together to come up with a series of recommendations for possible changes to the attendance zones for several of those schools in keeping with the guidelines from the board to, as we call it, to right-size elementary schools, which generally is considered somewhere between 450 and 550 students, depending on the capacity of the individual schools. And in so doing, over the course of this work and its three phases, to reduce the number of students in portable classrooms across the district at the elementary level. We paused the work in April of 2020 in the hopes that when this last fall came, we'd be in a position to hold community forums live and in person, and then these following board meetings that way as well. That sadly did not work out, so because of the pandemic, so we moved forward with virtual community forums, of which we held four of those and listened to feedback from our community and also alternative proposals and recommendations, both during those forums and then quite a lot of that via email. The remaining members of the parent committee then got together with myself and considered all of that feedback, examined alternative proposals against, so to speak, the guiding principles that had already been established and then presented recommendations to the school board at its meeting last month in November.
Okay. Can you just share a little bit about how people were selected and kind of what, how that all rolled out?
Just Oh, sure. So as I mentioned initially, there were five schools that were envisioned to be a part of this process. So I worked with the principals of those five schools with the idea that we hopefully would have two representatives from each of those schools to engage in the work, two parent representatives. We started the first meeting in December. There were nine parent representatives that were invited to that based on the recommendations of principals, and that translated into two parent representatives from each of those five schools with the exception of Ellsworth, where one parent had been identified. At that first meeting, seven of the nine showed up. We had a few folks that needed to drop out of the committee, two before they even attended a meeting, and then one after a couple of meetings. I worked with the principal at one school, and upon her recommendation, added one representative, an additional, a new representative to that school for a total of two. That happened in January, which worked out fine because that's when the work began in earnest after the December meeting of establishing group norms and beginning the work on the guiding principles. And so those seven parent representatives, again, representing all five of the schools that were initially envisioned to be part of this work, carried the work forward, and we landed in April with those initial recommendations prior to the community forums.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, do you have anything else you want to share with, with us before we move to audience questions and, and comments?
Can I ask a question real quick, Victoria?
Yeah.
Scott, you mentioned the, the virtual community forums. How, what was, I'm sorry if I missed this, but what was the attendance on those?
They were very well attended, at least as we, if we were to measure those against the attendance in round one of this process when we held, you know, forums in person. There were, I don't know, several dozen at one of those, probably fifteen to twentieth the other one. We also held a, an additional forum for Marion Elementary School that was in Spanish because there'd been quite a bit of interest from that school, possibly via, you know, the dual immersion program that's at that school to do one in Spanish. So myself and the parent committee worked with our ELL department on the translation and they helped us facilitate that. So for myself, and I think for all of us, we were very pleased with the attendance at those forums. It's, you know, the kind of thing, I've heard Superintendent Marino speak several times about even in the midst of the pandemic, there are opportunities to do things differently because one must and then you learn about some different things that you possibly can continue to do in the future. And it may be that even after this pandemic is behind us, that forums held virtually will be part of this process because it seemed to work out very well for parents as far as attendance went. So I was pleased with that. Thanks for the question, Julie.
Okay. Anything else? We'll have more time, we'll have questions by the board a little bit later. Okay, I'd like to call for audience questions and comments, and this is a time to speak to this particular agenda item. I know we had three people that had signed up for citizen comments during that portion, but this would be the time for them to make their comments or ask their questions. Lori, you've got the list, right?
Oh, sorry, I do. And we have Jennifer Klebnik ready to speak to the board.
Great, thank you.
Hi there.
Hi, Jennifer.
I don't know if my camera's on.
It's not.
It's just not. Y'all have seen me before, I'm sure. But you can hear me. So that's the most important thing. So I had a few questions. I'm going to try to make it as short as possible because I don't want to take up too much time. I have a few questions for the board. If you do approve of some of the changes, but not all of them, can you make that your decision? Or is it all or nothing? And also, can you choose a proposal that has been submitted by other interested parties? Or does it have to come from that committee?
Normally the
Yeah, go ahead.
Go ahead. Just to answer.
Yeah.
Answer that question real quick. Normally the process is the, the committee receives the input and it goes to the committee for their review and running it through the kind of the logistics that each each plan has to meet, you know, criteria. And, and then they bring anything that looks different or looks viable, then they bring it forward to us.
Yeah, I, I, I wish I had more time to properly give a real good counterproposal. As you have seen, I do a lot of research and I'm very detailed. So I, I think I could have done a much better job had I had the time to do so. I, I have one statement and then I'll, I'll leave for now, but I said, I know you're aware that I greatly disagree with the changes in regards to Fisher's Landing Elementary Boundary, especially since it was pushed a year or two ahead of schedule. But I, I cannot emphasize enough how concerned I am about the proposal change to Ellsworth and Marion. When I was a kid, I had to walk to school when I missed the bus. There are single families. There's people without a car. There's one where both parents work. Those kids, if they miss the bus, what's going to happen? Go back home? Isn't that illegal? Like, I know that they're bust kids and I know that they didn't think about that because of that, but I mean, come on, some people have to walk to school. That's just a fact of life for some people, a lot of people, many people. And so given that fact, that proposal for kids from north of Mill Plain to cross Mill Plain to go to Ellsworth is dangerous. Flat-out dangerous. And I, I cannot say, I care about children. I care about all the children. I know everybody does. But I, I think about the things that can happen. That is so busy. It's so, it's so dangerous. So I, I think I'm going to just leave it with that because that's the most important thing is I, I am greatly concerned about the safety of the children that would end up having to cross Mill Plain. I, that is, I mean, as much as I hate the Fisher's Landing thing, that, that just scares me, literally. I've lost sleep over thinking about that.
Okay, so does anyone have any questions for Jennifer?
Jennifer, you, you mentioned that those were the, the ones that would have to cross. In the proposal, they're all considered bust, right? None of them are considered walkers in that radius. And maybe I can ask Scott.
Yeah. No, they are considered bust, but again, kids miss the bus. Yeah, kids miss the bus. It happens. I've done it. I remember walking to school when I missed the bus as a kid because I didn't have a stay-at-home parent to drive me to school. It, a lot of people don't have that. They're not that lucky.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else have any questions for Jennifer? Okay, thank you, Jennifer. I appreciate your input.
Thank you, Victoria. And, and board, thank you.
Lori, who was next that signed up on our list?
I have Chris or Jana White.
Hello, this is Chris White.
Thank you for being here.
Yeah, thank you for, for letting us chat a little bit. My, I would like to propose delaying the non-essential redistricting of certain areas, particularly, I know that it was spoken during the presentation that Fisher's Landing was not part of the scope of the work initially. And I know that the board had some concerns as well. There's just a lot going on in the southeast part of, of the district as far as new developments. And when we've already got all the COVID disruptions, it's just, I would like to sort of see the dust settle a little bit on what new buildings are being built, what, what rezoning actually goes through. I don't know if you're aware of the, probably the HB, old HB Vancouver Innovation Center, light industrial versus mixed use. You know, they're potentially adding eighteen hundred houses just right behind me here. So that would be going into Fisher's Landing. So I, I guess it would just be nice to sort of have a better idea of what the plan for this area is before we start just shuffling kids around. You know, and then we've also got the Palisades that are being redeveloped. We have more just a little bit north on one ninety second and I think it's twenty-fifth or so. There's some large apartment complexes there that I believe feed into Fisher's Landing as well. So do we know if there's going to be a new elementary school in this section? Because that's, you know, we're just adding thousands of high-density. Yeah, that's my big concerns and proposal.
Mike, do you want to add anything to that thought about what's happening over there at that old HB campus?
There isn't any new elementary that's being, that was part of the bond in two thousand eighteen. I can't speak to the specific developments he's talking about, but I know that Scott and the committee had access to all of the development information as part of the conversation. I, I'm, my belief, and somebody's going to have to correct me if I'm wrong, but Fisher's Landing has always been part of this boundary re, redrawing for the second time around. I think the school that was added because of this was Columbia Valley, actually, not Fisher's Landing. So Fisher's Landing's been a part of this potential throughout. I, I guess the one thing I would add is, I mean, we, we have a lot of development throughout the district and we have, I think relatively good models that we use through our, working with the city, working with the facilities department on how many students are generated from multifamily and single-family projects. So I think at the last meeting, there was a lot of conversation around the development in the Furcrest area. We went back, looked at that. We reviewed all of the development again. And, and I think we're comfortable with moving forward with the recommendation. The schools do have enrollment declines. I think we've talked about that a lot. So I, I don't, I don't see significant issues from the additional development that will occur. And we're also going to have to see how things develop next fall when we come back. And even in the spring, as there's more of an opportunity for kids potentially to be in school with respect to vaccine distribution and that, that type of work. But I think all of the things that are being raised by Mr. White were things that the committee considered in the process. Scott maybe can verify that.
You.
Yes, that's true. There's, I'm not sure I'm familiar with every aspect that Chris is sharing regarding some of that. I've worked with Sue and Ray Lynn in our facilities department to make sure that we're abreast to the best of their knowledge with what is planned for the Fisher's Landing area and the one new or upcoming development that we talked about in the committee is located in the southeast section of the current Fisher's Landing zone. It actually straddles, I believe, one hundred and ninety-second Avenue, which means that a, a large portion of it is within the Evergreen School District boundary. And there's also a very large portion that's in the Camus School District. So we, of course, factored into, into our work and projections, you know, the part that, that is ours, correct? So we did do that. So you're correct, Mike, in that regard and the others as well.
Thanks. Sure. Chris, any, do you have any other comments or questions?
I did, was kind of curious because I know that it's a little outside of the scope, but the whole, there, there's a potential of a middle school. And I did note that the Shaheila School, they've got like twenty-six classrooms and portables. I don't know if there's been talk of redistricting the middle schools as well.
I'm not in the short term.
Okay. That's it.
Thank you, Chris. We appreciate your participation.
Thank you.
Okay, I think we had a third person that had signed up.
Yes, Victoria, we have Erin Parkinson ready to address the board.
Great.
Hi, good evening. Can everyone hear me?
Hi, Erin. Thank you for joining us tonight.
Yeah, thank you for having me. We have many concerns regarding the boundary shift specifically for Fisher's Landing. First and foremost is the integrity and due diligence of the parent committee. And this committee was formed and decisions were being made over a year ago, as has already been pointed out. And those of us that were impacted were not notified until October seventh of this year. That is extremely unethical and lacking transparency. Additionally, when Fisher, when the Fisher's Landing parent representatives determined that they were no longer going to be impacted by this change, they should have immediately recused themselves from the committee. They continued to make decisions which were favorable to their family and their community. Regarding the committee's lack of due diligence, per their own presentation at the last board meeting, they did not even survey our neighborhood until we voiced our concerns at the community meeting on October twenty-sixth. When asked by Mr. Perkins at the last board meeting, Mr. Monroe couldn't even point to the exact location of the new construction they're using to justify this change. Someone, had someone from our community had a voice in the planning, you would know that these are not family-friendly apartments as is being portrayed. And these are classified as urban lofts meant to attract the young professionals at Fisher Investments located directly across southeast one ninety-second and who are relocating here from their downsized offices in San Francisco and Los Angeles. There are no amenities at this complex which would draw families. And these are important details which could have been provided by any member of our community had our funds of knowledge been sought out. Secondly, as I understand it, the end goal is to remove portables from most of the schools, understandably. It is going to require displacing a whole lot more than fifty students from Fisher's Landing to achieve this. As it stands, there are six portables at Fisher's Landing. Fifty students would eliminate one portable at best, two classes. Right now, there are two fourth grade classes of twenty-five students there. A much larger overhaul would be needed if the intent is to eliminate portables. Lastly, and in the same vein as a large overhaul, and these boundary changes are simply putting a Band-Aid on a bullet wound. Evergreen School District is growing exponentially. Development is happening all over. As mentioned in the last board meeting by Mrs. Bocanegra and Mrs. Bradford, many schools are bursting at the seams. Demographics and fundings are about to dramatically shift district-wide. Endeavor and Burton are great examples, but also look at what, what is happening at Pioneer Elementary. A school with enrollment of, with an enrollment of almost seven hundred, Title One, with high percentage of low-income, high-risk students. Half a million to three-quarter of a million dollar homes are being built within its boundaries. That is a major disruptor and will eventually impact Emerald, BBC, York and Sifton. The impact of the new loft complex on one ninety-second and twentieth pales in comparison to what is happening at the former Velvet Acres property. This piecemealing of a boundary adjustment is a short-term fix to a long-term problem. Unfortunately, a major district-wide overhaul is going to be required to address the massive expansion within Evergreen School District. We ask the board to please take our serious and thoughtful considerations into account and reject these proposals. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Erin. Appreciate it. Any comments from Scott or Mike?
I don't
To Erin's comments.
Yeah, I, I think that maybe some of the enrollment numbers are, are old numbers because I think Pioneer is quite a bit lower than seven hundred kids based upon redrawing of boundaries last year. And I think we, we actually have approached it district-wide to try to get to the point where numbers, as Scott mentioned earlier, are rightsizing our buildings to around the four hundred and fifty to five hundred, I think, is what he said, somewhere in that range. And we actually, not, not even, you know, I mean, this year obviously is kind of an outlier with respect to enrollment due to COVID. I, I don't think there's any question there is development going on throughout the district, but we're actually seeing the opposite of what's being represented there. Our enrollment's been flat or declining for at least three, four, or five years. And we've been bringing in smaller kindergarten classes every year for probably at least the last four, five, six years. And of course, this year, like I said, is a major outlier when we've, we're hoping that, actually, I don't hoping, I think we believe that the, the, a lot of kids that have stayed away this fall will, will come back either this spring. And we've actually seen kindergarten enrollment grow throughout the year. And, and there's also no question that the interest is in removing as many portables as we can. But again, trying to make sure that the schools have similar sizes in that process. And I think I've heard Fisher's Landing was originally only built for four hundred and twenty kids or something like that. So there's likely going to always be some portables at Fisher's Landing, but I think the effort is to try to reduce the reliance on them there as much as possible. I understand what, what Erin is saying. I just, some of the enrollment numbers are off a little bit and I just wanted to clarify that.
I, I was looking for that email that you had sent us for Pioneer, because I know that Pioneer did have a lot of students before we opened Emerald. Pioneer because I know that Pioneer did have a lot of students before we opened Emerald.
Yeah, we were. We were over 700, but I can't remember right off. Scott knows. He probably has it in his hand. My think is that we're probably around 500 or less than 500 of Pioneer now.
Pioneer right now has approximately 524 students and they were projected to be. Closer to 550 at the start of this year. Based on their capacity. So. You know, as Mike mentioned, they were reduced significantly with the opening of Emerald Elementary School, and that was in phase one of the work.
Anything else you'd like us to know, Erin?
No, thank you.
Thanks for participating. We appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the audience who has questions or comments pertaining to this matter?
Director Bradford, I do have I Z. I don't have their full name on there wanting to ask a question.
Okay, great.
Are you there?
Yeah. Okay, yeah. Hello, can you guys hear me?
Yes. Yes, we can.
Hello. Yeah, hello. My name is Israel Parkinson. I'm Erin's husband. I'm not going to be nearly as eloquent as my wife, but so be it. So I I have some concerns and I and some of my concerns stem from how this whole committee was formulated and then. The the amount of power this committee holds because pretty much it sounds like what I'm hearing is what this committee is going to recommend is what's going to be. Endorsed and supported by the school board. So my so my biggest concerns is like you you gotta take a look at the the political climate today, unfortunately, and you gotta look at. What we're looking at it from a community, from a community here. We have, we have. Two of our representatives in the Fisher's Landing area are out there on the Evergreen Highway, which is probably one of the richest communities in Vancouver. They're they're going against their own guiding principles. They're supposed to be not from the same located area. And then on that, they're on the same street. So. I have concerns on how that committee or how the members represent us were selected. I also have some concerns on the recommendations of Clear Meadows being separated from Fisher's Landing because. I I don't think the impact and the impact on our community is is not only. Drastic, but it's very frustrating because we are one of the few communities out here that are no rental community. So we bought here because we want our kids to go to Fisher's Landing. We can't like, not that we would, but it's not like we could say, okay, well, we want to stay in Fisher's Landing so we could rent out our house and move somewhere else. We are stuck and committed to this neighborhood and we we can't do anything about it. So whatever decisions you guys make are going to definitely drastically affect this community. One of the other issues I have is when we start talking about transparency, I spoke to Scott when this first happened. I asked. So there was, I believe, seven or eight members of this committee. And I said, well, how many of those members of those of this committee were affected by the decisions of these proposals? And I believe in the last in the last board meeting we had in October 7th, they said there was two members of the committee that were affected by this proposal. So my follow-up question was, okay, good. Can you can you then tell me? What was their effect? I didn't need to know names or anything like that. I just want to know what the net effect was. Did they go was this was the neighborhood where they live? Were they were they were they gaining a better school? Because the reality is, we all know these schools are ranked and rated for reasons. Were they gaining better schools or were some or were some of these affected committee members getting negative schools like where they go? Because. I have a I struggle to see how Evergreen can justify staying in the Fisher's Landing District. Or school, school. I I was just curious out of transparency and I was told by Scott that between Scott and Mike that that information was not pertinent and that it shouldn't be transparent and irrelevant. Well, I think that is a I think that is relevant information. Because I feel like this has been a rush process. You guys have already delayed things because of the COVID, so there's no reason why not to stop. And just push it out another year so we can all we can all sit and and get all the information, not be rushed to. Not be rushed to get on board with this with two months' notice. I know Jana started a. Jana White, they started a petition, an online petition. I know there's several hundred people that signed up that said they voted against this. We were going to do paper, paper petitions, but unfortunately with COVID, it wasn't. You know, it's not a good time to be going and knocking on people's doors, but that's another thing that we wanted to get involved in, but we don't have time to do because it's COVID. So I just wish you guys would consider if not rejecting this proposal, that you at least. Delay it for a year. I I don't see what the rush is. And with that, I'm done speaking.
Okay, thank you so much for for being with us tonight. Scott or Mike, any comments there to clarify anything on that?
I I don't. I don't have anything to say.
Okay. Okay, do we have anyone else in the audience that would like to make comment or have a question?
Director Bradford, Ms. Klevnik, who spoke earlier, has raised her hand again.
Okay.
Are you on?
Yes, I am.
Thank you.
Hi, Jennifer.
Mute was delayed. I just wanted to, I did forget. I was so excited about telling you about my concerns about Ellsworth and Marion. I forgot to say, yeah, if we're getting or if we're trying to clear the portables, you know. That 50 people is not going to fix the problem. Like, you know, they it maybe the Evergreen Highway area also can be called. To fix that problem. That would add another 35 people. And and my other one was I greatly encourage everybody to just take a step back and postpone the decision, please. And that's it.
Okay, thanks, Jennifer. Lori, do we have anyone else in the audience?
We do. We have Lindsay Harris wanting to address the board.
Okay, hello, Lindsay. Is Lindsay there?
There may be technical difficulties. The moderator did unmute her.
Okay.
We also have Chris and Jana White raising their hand again, who spoke earlier.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
There's.
Okay, this is actually Janet. Chris has actually ran off to another meeting. Actually, the Vancouver Innovation Project, which is the. Field that's in between Clear Meadows and Fisher's Landing that is currently getting rezoned. We've been discussing. So I don't think that there's a real good, clear understanding on the school board's part of. How many new homes are actually going into this area? Between the Palisades, the Vancouver Innovation Project. And the new apartments off of 192nd. There's roughly 3,000 new families going to be filling those homes. I know when Chris spoke, he he brought that up as well. And it was kind of brushed off as it you guys don't feel like that's going to affect the attendance at Fisher's Landing. I I don't really understand how you don't under how you can't see that. 3,000 new families. In like a three-mile radius around Fisher's Landing. That's obviously going to affect the affect the attendance. I I don't think that maybe somebody's connected the dots of where these are actually at. I don't know if any of you live out here, if you really know what's happening. But those are major, major developments that are brand new. They're huge. I I agree with everybody else that said, I think you need to hold off for a year and actually do some research of what is happening. Before you start changing the boundaries for the Fisher's Landing folks. Yes, we we moved into our neighborhood, Clear Meadows, for Fisher's Landing. I I do see with those new 3,000 homes and apartments being built. That, yeah, we are obviously at some point going to, you know, probably get kicked out of Fisher's Landing Elementary. I'm not happy about it, but I get it. But I I don't think it's reasonable to be moving us now until you know exactly. You know, where are all these kids going to go? I mean, to me, 3,000 new homes, it's you're going to need another elementary school in the area. I know you said that hasn't been passed in the last. School bond, but I mean, obviously, something's going to have to happen. Or the school board needs to start talking to the city and say, hey, you need to stop building so many houses. Because we don't have the infrastructure for that. So that's my biggest point here.
Okay. Scott, do you have any comments that address what Jan is talking about?
There we go. Just trying to find the right buttons on the computer. And, well, again, and similar to, you know, what I think, you know, Chris White might have shared before. I think he was. The one who did. You know, I I'm at a loss at the moment as to where the, you know, the figure of 3,000 homes that would affect Fisher's Landing. You know, is coming from. I'm not aware of that. So. You know, I I definitely will reloop with Sue and Ray Lynn and. You know, ascertain with certainty that there isn't anything that I'm missing. You know, because again, that was part of the process a couple of times during the process and. You know, the numbers of construction was considered by the committee, but it was nowhere near approaching, you know, what I'm. Hearing on this call, so I'll I'll take a look at that and then report back to Mike and to you guys.
Okay, thank you, Scott. Do we have anyone else in the audience?
Yes, Director Bradford, Lindsay Harris has raised her hand again, so we're going to try to see if we can get her on the line.
Okay, great. Lindsay, are you there?
Yeah, it appears she's having technical difficulties. I'm not sure what's happening.
Can you hear me now?
There she is.
Okay, sorry. It's my new headphones. I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Um, we've all been there.
Technology, love it. So I am new to the school district. I have a kindergartner at Orchards. And Ms. Shepherd is her teacher. She's very great. And so looking on your website, I was trying to figure out when the schools might open up. Of course, there's data on both sides, why they're closed and why they should be opened up, but I saw on there your equity resolution. And that kind of surprised me. I'm a Native American enrolled tribal member, and so is my daughter. And when I tried to learn more about this equity program, I went to sign up and it. It asked if I was interested in meeting by demographic, and I thought that that was a strange question. And I'm sure there's some reason why you all might might do that, but it kind of sounds like segregation, and I think that it might be counterproductive to. What your resolution is actually trying to achieve. And then also in paragraph six of that resolution. And it's resolution 6365. It it states that you all are trying to recruit people of color. And but then also, one of your policies is that you do not discriminate. Against people regarding their skin color. So I would figure that would include Caucasian people. And and so I was trying to, because those contradict each other and, of course, that latter policy of of not discriminating against people because of their. Skin color probably came first before the resolution, I'd imagine. And so I was trying to find more information about this equity policy and. And supposedly, you you all would have had something before the start of this school year, and I wasn't able to find it on the. School website. And also, it talks about audits to make sure that you all are achieving this. Push for equity and I was interested in learning more about that and. I think that the emphasis on race and the emphasis on hiring by color instead of by qualifications is not in the best interest. Of the students and maybe I'm just simple-minded, but and and this equity thing is is just seems very confusing to me, especially as a Native American. I wouldn't want to be. Singled out and if I'm meeting by demographic, you know, I might have like, I don't know, three other people to meet with. But I just I think it's really bizarre and counterproductive and I wanted to find out more about it and I was wondering if you all finished that. That policy.
We're still in the in the works of that by getting. Input from other people. Right now, we're currently on the agenda talking about our boundary changes. But we do have on the agenda further down an equity. Update about the work that we're doing. So if you don't mind hanging in there, we'd love to have you listen in and then if there's more questions, we'd be happy to connect you with someone in our district who could answer those questions for you.
I'm so sorry. Okay.
Oh, you're fine. You're fine. So hang in there with us and we'll get to that part in the agenda. We'd love to have you hear what's going on and then we'll connect you with somebody in the district to go in deeper on that for you.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Lindsay. Okay, do we have anyone else who has comments or questions regarding the boundary changes?
I don't have anybody new. I do have Iz, again, raising his hand to comment.
Okay, alrighty.
Yeah, I just had one last, one last question, and that is, and I'm I'm actually asking you guys. If this proposal is not rejected, what would be the ramification of holding it up of why not? Like, what would be the argument against not moving for or not holding it off for a year? Considering as we all say, this COVID stuff is a special circumstance. And let let the sea, let let everything shake out in this area before these decisions are pushed through.
Mike, do you want to answer that question?
I think actually Scott can answer that question because I think there's some specifics around some of the buildings within this rotation.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, you know, my take on that, first and foremost, would be the. You know, currently being rebuilt Marion and Ellsworth Elementary Schools. Which are set to open, you know, this coming fall at the same time that this proposal, you know, if approved, would go into effect and. So, you know, in my view, it's important that. We engage in the work to to redraw the boundaries for those schools and have the. New boundaries that are designed around the increased capacities of the new buildings in place when those schools open. And that's a a big part of this to me.
Okay.
And then the other part, you know, and related to that same area of the district would be, and I think Mike or somebody mentioned it a little bit before. Would be all of the, you know, construction that is currently going on in the Furcrest neighborhood. And so, you know, part of this proposal. In addition to eliminating a patchwork quilt area for Furcrest would increase the capacity there so that we've got the. Buffer that we think we need, you know, based on all of that. So. You know, my personal belief is in those sections, certainly the timing of this is, you know, fairly critical.
Okay, thank you.
And I guess the one thing I would say about the the Scott mentioned something and Sue also, the the 3,000 homes. That we're hearing, we don't, we don't have record of 3,000. We're we're aware of the Vancouver, and I think it's the Vancouver Innovation Center. Bringing in multifamily and single-family. But also I think that that's going to be a five to 15-year build-out per the information that they've shared with the city, but not near the 3,000 figure.
Yeah, hey, but real quick. So one of the one of the other concerns I have too is that currently, I don't know, am I still unmuted?
Yeah, you are.
Yeah.
Okay, so one of the other concerns that I have is is that when I was looking at the chart. And I don't know if this has changed, but like for us in Clear Meadows with us being pushed to Columbia Valley. When you look at the the progression of where our kids would go to school. We're unknown when it comes to high school as well. So like, we have a bunch of unknowns, like we're all the other ones. They have the same line path and they say the kids will, well, the kids that knew kids officially and will meet up with them again in high school or middle school or whatever. The chart I saw had us as unknown that it was undetermined where we were, where our kids were going to go. I don't know if I was looking at the wrong chart, but that was my understanding and that's just another reason that I would say. Hey, this we this should be, this should be halted for a year. At least till things settle from this COVID stuff.
So we we don't have any proposed changes for middle school or high school boundaries. So no matter where you live in the district, you should be able to tell what middle school or high school you would go to.
I believe they pushed out the one they pushed out said that it was it was unknown whether or not Clear Meadows would go to. Mountain View or was it Union? Union, like on the chart that I believe Scott pushed out.
When I'm looking at the chart. Well, I'm looking at the chart now, and the Clear Meadows section, you know, that we're discussing, is, you know, does now and would in the future go to Chehalah and to Mountain View, because as Mike mentioned, the middle school boundaries, the high school boundaries, we're not proposing a change to that, so.
Okay, I, I will dig up, I'll dig up the chart that we saw, but there was a, there was a, like an, like an Excel sheet or some kind of matrix that outlined all the schools of where they would go after this, after this repositioning. And it showed, for Clear Meadows, it showed Mountain View slash Union. So I might have some misinformation there. I'll dig it up and then email it out to you guys, but I'm pretty sure that was something that we got from you, Scott, but again, I'll research it.
I'd be, you know, happy, Israel, to take a look at that. I'm, I'm looking at the chart now that I, I think you're referring to, and the Union slash Mountain View is currently and in the future, that's the, what I would call the main area for Columbia Valley, because, you know, that is, depending on where one lives within that zone, most of those students go to Union, but some of them go to Mountain View.
But, yeah, so then, so they would be divvied up, okay.
And we can go from there.
No, no, I, I, so I think we are talking about the same thing. So either way, so, so just to be clear that I understand, the kids going to Columbia Valley get split up down the road at high school then, depending on, like, for us being in Clear Meadows, we would wind up going to Mountain View, the other kids from Columbia Valley that are on the other side of 28th or whatever would go to Union or whatever.
Right, there's no proposed changes to high school or middle school boundaries, that, that they're of course based on your address, so. Regardless of what the board decides with the elementary proposals that are currently being discussed, middle school and high school doesn't change.
Yeah, so I mean, but this is just one more avenue of where I'm just a little frustrated, so we have our kids that are in Fisher's Landing, they get split up from their friends there, then they go, they make new friends at Columbia Valley, then they split up, they won't see them at Columbia Valley as well. This is just one more reason why I'm just, and I'm done talking, but I just would wish you guys would push this off, we feel like this is rushed. We're in Clear Meadows, we heard about this two months ago, like, I, I really hope the school, the, the board considers just holding off and letting things, let the dust settle before things change. And with that being said, thank you guys, I will not be raising my hand again.
Thank you for being here. Okay, do we have anyone else in the audience that needs to share with us tonight?
Not at this time.
Okay, well, I appreciate the people that were here tonight. So now, I would like to call for a motion regarding the board boundaries and whether this should be moved forward for a second reading.
Victoria, I move that we advance this proposal to a second reading at our next meeting.
I'll second.
Okay, so now, I want to open, I accept the second, and then I would like to open this up for board, the board to ask questions and make comments at this point.
So I, I, from the comments, I just have a couple clarifying questions, if I, if I may.
Yes.
Columbia Valley, right now, they all feed into Chehalah. Is that correct?
And the, the main area of Columbia Valley feeds into Chehalah, yes, the area surrounding the school.
And then the others go where? West?
In its entirety.
Or Pacific?
No, the, the satellite area, the Cimarron neighborhood, let's see, let me look at that. They go to Pacific.
Is this, but isn't in this proposal, the Cimarron neighborhood is gonna go to Hearthwood?
Hearthwood.
Hearthwood, correct.
Okay.
So, I mean, that's a different area than, you know, again, what I consider the, the main area that Israel was talking about.
Okay.
But I think all of the Columbia Valley kids would go to Chehalah, after, if the, the Cimarron students go to Hearthwood.
No, they'd still go, you know, again, because, you know, the middle school boundaries don't change, so. So right now, the, again, this Columbia Valley main area, obviously, they go to Columbia Valley, right? And then they all go to Chehalah, and then most of them go to Mountain View, and, or excuse me, most of them go to Union, and some of them go to Mountain View. And then the Cimarron neighborhood, right now, obviously, they go to Columbia Valley, but then they all go to Pacific, and they all go to Evergreen. And so that, of course, you know, doesn't change, if this part of the proposal, you know, ends up being accepted by the board, then the Cimarron neighborhood would change their elementary school to Hearthwood, then they'd still go to Pacific, which would be with a portion of the kids that they, in that case, went to elementary school with. And then they would all go to Evergreen High School together, because all of Hearthwood goes to Evergreen. And, you know, so it's, it's a little bit better aligned, if you look at it from a feeder pattern standpoint, with the change for that area.
The sense that I have right now is the entirety of the Clear Meadows neighborhood that we've been talking about is fed into Mount, Chehalah, followed by Mountain View.
That's correct.
And there are, I don't know, Mike, if you can confirm, that there are no current discussions about changing boundaries for middle and high school. I think you did affirm that, there's no secondary boundary changes under discussion at this.
Yeah, I think I've said that a couple times.
Yeah. Current boundaries for Ellsworth Elementary include an exclave in north of Burton Road and the, in the Oakbrook neighborhood. I wonder if I, I could learn from you, Scott, what happens if those kids miss the bus?
Well, I mean, those kids, you know, back to, you know, I think the point that, that Jennifer made, I think, you know, I mean, there's no denying that, whether you're talking about the Oakbrook neighborhood, or whether you're talking about, you know, the current proposal, which is that section just north of Mill Plain, I mean, both of those are north of Mill Plain, and so that means by definition, they're all in a bus zone. And it would be considered, you know, from a district standpoint, unsafe passage for them to walk, because they'd have to cross Mill Plain. In the case of the Oakbrook neighborhood, it would, I, I mean, it's, in my mind, it's not really feasible, you know, to, to walk if they miss the bus, because you're talking about a 25, 30-minute bus ride, as it is right now, from that neighborhood all the way to Ellsworth, when you factor in the stops, and so. You know, part of this proposal, you know, unfortunately, the numbers don't work out, you know, to use Mill Plain as the buffer between the two schools, because Ellsworth would be too small, and Marion would be much too large, especially when you consider the DI program and the growth that's, that's there. So this proposal, you know, it doesn't eliminate, unfortunately, the need to have some of the Ellsworth zone north of Mill Plain, but it does make, if approved, that section, you know, a whole, a much shorter bus ride, you know, from those homes to Ellsworth than the Oakbrook neighborhood is.
Okay, and then I guess I just had to come in to make that after the last workshop meeting, in connection with this proposal. Scott was, we all had an opportunity to speak with Scott and Mike, one on one, about the ramifications and have some of our concerns resolved. And he did, in fact, return with the correct demographic information that, I guess, one of the, one of the people testifying said that wasn't available at our first, our first workshop, we received those answers. We just wanted to get that into the conversation as well, is that we, I, I consider myself fully informed about what's happening and to have asked about some of the same concerns that were raised tonight. Maybe you could talk a little bit about, it, it's not a certainty, I know that, but the boundary exception process and some of the flex that might exist in that, if a parent outside of the school area wants to select a school with room.
Sure, well, the, you know, as we've discussed, and I think this came up in, I can't remember if it came up in the community forums, but I know there were a few email inquiries that came from parents that were answered. But in answer to your question, Rob, the, the process for parents anywhere in the district to request a boundary exception from their home school to any other school of their choice, that remains intact, you know, really separate from this process, so. The, the added provision, as I think you all know on the board, is that in policy, there is a, a provision or references made to any current fourth grade students that would be affected if, by proposals such as this that are approved, you know, with the idea that, if at all possible and space allows, and parents want to seek a boundary exception for their current fourth grader, we want to be in a position to approve those, if at all possible, so that a student, you know, isn't at a brand-new elementary school for what would then be their final year of elementary before moving on to middle school. And as we discussed, I mean, related to that, you know, but separate, it is, has always been and will always continue to be our goal to, as space allows at schools, to say yes to as many boundary exception requests as we get, because, you know, anytime a parent requests a boundary exception from their home school to another school, you know, they have very good reasons for that, and if so, if we as a district can be in a position to accommodate them and approve that, we want to be able to do so, and we'll continue to take that mindset.
For me, I was, you know, when we had our first workshop, and I think I posed some questions, I was concerned about what would happen with the Endeavor area, and Endeavor's not on this one right now, but we knew, do know that there's still students in that area that are attending Furcrest. And that eventually, we were going to have to take care of that problem, and so I did, I did have some concerns around what was gonna happen there, especially with some of the new developments that are happening around around 112. And wondering, you know, you know, what would this look like if we waited, or if we put it on pause, but then I also understand that we have brand-new skill, brand-new schools that are gonna be ready to go. And it's all the domino effect, and so we've got to be able to put those kids and fill those schools to capacity right from the, right from the beginning, plus, when we go to phase three of this, and Burton is rebuilt, that will then alleviate some of that problem in that Endeavor area. Because we'll be able to realign and have more capacity, because that, isn't Burton one of our smallest schools right now?
Yeah, Burton is actually, right now, or, and actually, you know, pre-pandemic, our second smallest school at the elementary level, and so.
And Hearthwood, right?
Hearthwood is the smallest, right, which, that will be slightly less small, you know, again, depending on what the board decides with this series of recommendations. So, when, you know, the new Burton, because that's, you know, one of the schools that we're lucky enough to, to rebuild as part of the 2018 bond, and so, the new Burton, right now, is scheduled to open in the fall of 2023. And when it reopens, it, I mean, it already, the attendance zone for Burton already abuts the attendance zone for Endeavor. When the new Burton opens, those two schools will be even closer together because of its new location. And so, you know, our plan, and right now, the numbers bear this out, and I, really, I shouldn't say our plan, I should say my current thinking, based on, you know, whatever the, you know, third parent committee thinks when we do that work. But there's certainly going to be a, you know, a lot of room for growth at the new Burton, not only based on its current enrollment, but based on the new building, because the new building will have an increased capacity, the same as Marion and Ellsworth. So, that, based on the numbers right now and the projections, looks to be able to give us the room we need, not only to right-size both Burton and Endeavor, but also, with Furcrest being in the mix there, the, quite a high likelihood, in my opinion, that we'll be able to address those apartment complexes that you mentioned, Julie, that are so close to Endeavor, and allow those to attend, you know, Endeavor, which they're much closer to, if that's the will of the committee and the board approves it, and then, you know, have some other kids go to Furcrest, you know, again, depending on what happens and the timing of all that current construction that we talked about before.
Yeah, I, I just think that, you know, that deciding and, you know, and working towards this recommendation is, you know, not only this step for next year, but it also is a domino effect for what's to come after that, and, you know, and I think that when this board set out, and put the bond, you know, several years ago, and started, did that, I mean, that work, even though the bond passed a few years ago, we, but started that work many, many years ago, talking about the, the growth and what we needed, and one of our, always has been one of our guiding principles, is about less kids and portables, and so, whatever we can do to accomplish it, now, that's why we built these new, that rebuilt the schools when they were old, but to also expand the capacity and get kids out of portables, if we could, and if that's, and I, and I understand that attachment to your elementary school, I get it, I mean, I think everybody across the district, and we, and all of us board members live in different areas of the district, and, you know, our elementary school was Sifton, not new Sifton, old Sifton, but we had an attachment to it, so I, I get it, it just, you know, that's what happens when you're in your, your neighborhood, and you have that attachment to your elementary school and your community. But I also have a belief that all of our schools are great schools with great people inside of them, doing amazing work, so. I, I also think that, you know, that if there's adjustment or realignment, I think that people will be okay, and I think that they'll enjoy whatever school that they're in, I think that they'll get used to that school community.
I'm glad you brought that up, Julie, because I was thinking the same thing. Since you mentioned that I've been around for a while, I've seen a lot of boundary changes over the years, and it's very difficult to think about changing your school. Which is a good thing, because we want people to be engaged in their schools and, and love their school. But I also know that people make that change, because I, up until this last month, lived in the Cimarron neighborhood, and I remember things when they were all shifting around for us, and, but you know what? The parents maintained positive attitudes, the kids got in there, the schools are good. I tend to be skeptical of the best schools report, because it doesn't take in so many things, I mean, it's just, they're kind of bogus in a way. I, you, we've all been in these schools, I mean, Columbia Valley's an awesome school, I've been in there. That used to be my only school I went to on the first day of school, because I loved that school so much, they were so awesome. And the kids just were really fun and happy to be there. And so, I, I really want to encourage the parents that have concerns, I get it, just like Julie said. We've been there, we, we know what it's like, and it will be okay. But I, I do understand the angst about it. And I also, in just, in the, in our review of things, and our meeting with, with Scott and Mike after the board workshop on this, because we did, definitely heard what you were saying and had questions about it, and seeing the reasoning behind it all, and what they looked at, and how they tried to make things work, you know, looking at the new ideas and stuff, there are just times when it is what it is, and that's never easy. Because, you know, we're grateful that you want to advocate for your kids, and we think that's an important part of why our schools are what they are, is that we have parents that are involved and want to be a part of their children's educational experience, and we encourage that and encourage you to stay. their children's educational experience. And we encourage that and encourage you to stay connected. Um, but I do want to give you just some reassurance that the schools that they will be going to are going to equally be as wonderful. And you will get engaged and involved in that community and you'll you'll see. It's a wonderful place too, with really great teachers who care about their, about your children.
I really believe that about Columbia Valley, myself, having been there at several occasions and um, knowing who the principal there is and who she's brought on as teachers. It is a place where they care about all the kids. And it is a wonderful place to learn. Um. Yeah, a little vulnerable there, but yeah, I just, I love visiting that school too.
Mm hmm. Um. Anybody else on the board have any other questions or comments? Jenny, any thoughts on yours?
Um, nope, I had um a very good conversation with uh the other day with Scott and Mike, so I got all my questions answered um and concerns addressed, so I appreciate it.
Rachel? Any thoughts?
Uh, a lot of thoughts, I feel.
As you're in the Fisher's Landing area.
Right, I understand the attachment to Fisher's Landing. I'm very attached to Fisher's Landing. Um. And, you know, as a child, I was affected by a boundary change and had to go to a different school, my fourth and fifth grades. Um, and that was really hard as a child to have to do that. But in the end, it helped me be flexible. I made new friends. And luckily got to bring some of my old friends with me too. But um it's definitely something that's gonna really impact our families. And I think it's something that we have to be really deliberate and careful about. But I think that our committee was really deliberate and careful about it. And that's you know, where I guess I just disagree with some of our commentators tonight. Um. In that, I know after talking to Scott and Mike that we, our, this committee really did put a lot of thoughtful work into this and considered many different options. Um. So it's that's a really hard decision. And I think that we just have to do what's best for our entire district. And I think doing some changes now and some changes later is not really the best way to go. You know, some people are asking us to delay certain areas of this change where we need to make some now. So I'm on board with making all the decisions now. And I do think that we have really put a lot of thought and effort into this. I wish that we could satisfy everybody, and I I know we can't. Um, and that's the terrible side effect of this process.
Vic, if you don't mind, I could also point out that what we're, what we're voting on today is the first reading and that there will be time in the next uh, the next meeting is in January, right?
Mm hmm.
Yeah, it's probably when the second reading will take place. There will be time for us to consider everything that's been offered tonight.
Yeah.
And uh, reach a decision that includes those voices. Um, I want to point out too that uh there's some questions and things being entered in the Q and A. But I think that the time for public comment passed regarding this when we made our motion to discuss.
Yeah, I've read them all.
Yeah, and me too. And that those comments are going to be in the public record as well. So we won't have lost that. We we'll be able to capture that uh and remain open to emails back and forth and and conversations between now and that, and that second reading. Um, and I express appreciation for the anxiety around change that Rachel pointed out and the anxiety that um just want to repeat, it's like if you're worried about something, I think that means that you care about it. And uh, I think we're listening to people tonight who care.
Any other input, comments?
Oh, could we point out that we're not gonna be using Q and A during public comments for any purpose? I don't think we have a structure for that.
For um.
The written Q and A tool.
The questions answers on the screen, wh- what you're just talking about, Rob, right?
Yeah, yeah.
So the people that are popping questions in, w- that's not part of the process. We can't respond to those.
Right.
As we move forward in the meeting is what you're saying.
We can still acknowledge that we've received them and we've read them. Um, but, yeah.
That that I, well, it's just as a, I guess, a point of order kind of thing is uh are we going to use that tool or read those questions aloud or anything uh during public comment?
No.
Okay.
Yeah, but we've got them, we, but we do have have them as part of the record for the board to have as part of our process. Yes, thanks, Rob, for asking. Okay. All right. So at this time, um we'll now take a vote to accept this um existing boundary change is presented for a second reading, knowing that in the middle of all of this, we'll still be researching, looking at things and receiving information as we go forward. So I'll take a roll call vote. I'm a yes. Julie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Jenny?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, we will um then go ahead, move this forward for a second reading. It'll be brought back. Um. And again, the second reading is there for a reason, so we have time for more research on this and and we will be putting great thought into it as we move forward. Okay, so our next on the agenda is the board consent agenda. Um, do I have a motion for approval of the board consent agenda?
Director Grunwald so moves.
Is there a second? Is that Julie? Okay. Okay, all in favor? I'm an I, uh, I I'm a yes. Jenny?
Yes.
Rachel?
Yes.
Julie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, that's been approved. Next up is the, um, oops, hang on. Sorry, guys. Ended up having to look at this on my phone instead of my printout. See. Okay, next up, we have the superintendent's consent agenda. Do I have a motion for approval of the superintendent's consent agenda?
Director Perkins so moves.
Director Grunwald seconds.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Um, we'll now take a vote. I'm a yes. Jenny?
Yes.
Rachel?
She wasn't muted, she muted herself.
Yes, I somehow also made myself like my entire screen, so I don't know how I did that. I'm just looking at myself right now.
Julie?
Yes.
Rob?
Yes.
All right, thank you. It's been approved. Oh, my gosh. Okay. Okay, hang in here with me, guys. Trying to find our next our next uh item here.
I'll help you.
Okay. Penalty report. Thank you, I appreciate that. I needed help. Okay, so
Me.
Where is my co? You went away off my screen.
I'm here, you can hear me. Okay, so I want to share just a few different things um that are occurring, what's been happening, uh, what we're doing. Um, I'll I'll start with uh this past Friday, we had a legislative forum uh by Zoom. It was the first time that that's happened. Uh, but you know, like with these board meetings, with a lot of the meetings, like uh Scott mentioned with respect to the turnout for our forums, you know, when you do it by Zoom, you often have a larger turnout than what you might otherwise have. And so I think we had a larger number of legislators participate by Zoom than what we might typically have. And um they were asked at the beginning to kind of share what it is they uh, what it is that they uh want to learn. Um, unfortunately, the these forums are really meant where we're making kind of presentations to them. Because basically what almost every one of the folks um that are legislators were wanting to know how kids get back to school. Because the the individuals that uh they represent, a lot of the families are reaching out and really struggling with the length and the amount of time that this uh continues to go on, um, like everybody is struggling with it. Uh, the forum didn't really kind of take that head on. There was a po- a point in time where we did. Um, uh Representative Kraft and Representative Vic uh asked some pretty specific questions about that. Um, and and really, I think the response uh of the superintendents was around um, really the guidelines that are in place that we have in the state uh that we can't continue to operate under the ones that were presented at the beginning of the year. Um, is what we follow, you know, it's it's the situation is you have people in Olympia saying, well, it's a local decision um on how you handle that, but there's this Department of Health uh decision tree that we need to follow. Um. And and so it's a difficult, it is a difficult situation. I think we all have been tracking the rates. Uh. I don't think the county updated their numbers this week yet. As I understand it, they're merging some systems and struggling with coming up with the calculation. Uh, I looked before the meeting, it still shows that we're four hundred and twenty-seven point six four per hundred thousand. Uh, Dr. Melnick uh continues to have concerns with the number of cases uh that are are occurring. For me, um, my comments to the, to the, because they're asking what can they do to help? For me, we've been listening honestly from the Superintendent of Public Instruction and others uh that we need to wait until a vaccine shows up. Once a vaccine shows up, then that's the path back. And so my kind of request for the folks in Olympia was that we make sure that uh whenever the vaccine becomes available, that there's uh efficient distribution of the vaccine. Uh, and some clarity around um what requirements may or may not exist with respect to the vaccine. But it's really frustrating um to hear kind of some of the things that we hear. And and at this point, I don't know that there is a clear understanding of exactly who. I I think it's clear that the first folks that get the vaccine will be people that are healthcare workers. Um, and I think most at-risk individuals, uh, and I think the data pretty well shows uh who those individuals are. Um, I I know that there was a a blog post or some sort of a of a distribution uh from the president of WEA this week uh uh or last week, talking about the potential persons to pay State Department of Health guideline changes. And that there was some uh discussion around a conversation between the uh, the leadership of WEA and the governor and that there wouldn't be any changes. But in, for me, the comment I think that he shared was, I think, in that there was some conversation around prioritization of folks that work in schools towards the vaccine. Um, so w- we're gonna have to kind of see how the next uh several weeks um develop as to how many doses we receive, how fast we receive them in the state of Washington, what the actual plan is for distribution. Um, and that that's significant because if we get to this point of this crisis, eight, nine months in, and we start having political problems, which clearly we've had political problems throughout. But at this point, if we have cl- political problems, when we have access to a vaccine, it really becomes an indictment of adults because our kids are losing school every day. And we are here for our children. And we need to do everything we can to make sure that that happens. So um, I think everybody is uh whether that's families, whether that's students, whether that's our staff. Um, I thi- I think everybody's just really frustrated and everybody is very um kind of just tired of the situation that we're all facing. Uh, so my, my message repeatedly with Olympia folks will be we need to lead, you know, I think the the individuals in Olympia want to tell school districts you need to lead and just make some decisions regardless of the guidelines that we've put in place. Um, and I think that's hard. I think the leadership needs to come from Olympia, and I'm very hopeful that that will occur um in the next several weeks and months. Um. The CDC recently uh put out some new guidelines on the quarantine language. Um. And as what appears to be almost with everything that has happened around this, um, our state has some counties adopting it one way, other counties adopting it another way. So there's not consistency. Um, I think in Clark County, there's a feeling that we should stay with the CDC's most strict guidelines of fourteen days of quarantining. And of course, we're gonna follow what our county says, but we're really advocating for Dr. Melnick as much as he can. Again, to push the state to say, what's the guideline for the state? It shouldn't be one guideline in Yakima and another guideline in King County and another guideline in Whitman County and another in Clark County. It 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 it, we meet every week and um the frustrations are being felt. So uh, I think that Clark County is doing everything we can to safely return students to school. Um, in an environment of kind of cases that just continue to um grow. And uh Jay sent me a text now, I think the number's four forty-seven instead of four twenty-seven. So it's gone up a little bit. So we're starting to see a little bit of a a slowdown, hopefully, with that. Now, all that being said, the frustrations aside, I'll I'll share a few other things that we're working on. Uh, one, uh, we, the state had some stimulus money from last summer. Uh, and some of those dollars were specifically allocated for devices. And they started distributing the uh access to devices for districts in the state of Washington based upon some demographic information. We were not in the first tier of that request. We were able to make a request in the second tier. Uh, we were a second-tier district. We uh r- received information just within the last few weeks that we have been um approved for two thousand, over two thousand devices. So we're gonna receive some, uh, we have the ability to to um purchase and then be reimbursed for over two thousand devices from the state of Washington. That's good news. Um, that'll help us out. Uh, as we uh initially, you know, with the the one-to-one initiative, it wasn't envisioned that we would be sending devices home necessarily with elementary school kids. So we're seeing more uh extensive usage of our devices than what you might have seen, um, what what you might have expected. So it is a really nice thing that we're able to receive those. Um, I I do think uh in the conversations with the um local uh with Dr. Melnick and our local folks, I I really do see that if we manage the vaccine distribution and uh we get good guidance from the state, I do, I I'm very optimistic that we will have kids back um this year in some fashion. And um maybe not sooner rather than later. But I think we do have an opportunity to make that happen. It's very important to me, if at all costs, we have the ability um to have our students back at school this year. Maybe our kids have a season, some seasons in the spring to play sports. Our band students have opportunities to to uh do more than virtual presence uh concerts. Our theater students have some ability to our, in that our our seniors have an opportunity to graduate in some sort of an actual ceremony um this year. So I I am optimistic about that. With all that being said, one of the things that we talked about this week and we've been talking about, I I directed our teaching and learning folks to um, in the next month or thereabouts, as we get closer to the end of the year, we we get closer to the opportunity to have kids on site. And so everybody knows that um, while I think we've got a great program, our staff has done a tremendous job of of delivering instruction to our kids in a very difficult situation. Uh, that face-to-face onsite is the preferred, clearly, for most kids, delivery uh instructional delivery program. We have, I've talked about, we need to free up money, whether it's through the districts, basic ed funds, levy funds, Title I then to support that, lab to support that. But we've got to create what opportunities we're going to make available for our students this summer. And identify the students for some services to start working on some of the catch-up for areas that we might have fallen behind. So I would say in the next, you know, by the time we get into January, late January, we should have plans starting to be developed on what that looks like for us this summer. I think in a typical year, it's sometimes it's difficult to get kids to participate because they've been at school all year, even staff to participate because they've been at school all year. I think that the demand is going to be there this year, and I think we need to take advantage of that and do as much as we can to extend the school year. So we'll report more on that. The last several weeks, I've, I've shared, you know, I've been out meeting with principals. I've expanded that into associate principals here in the last several weeks. My belief is we need to create, build on as many relationships as we can. I'm doing that within the district by meeting safely, appropriately with our staff throughout the district, getting feedback on what's working, what's not working, and how we can make changes. I'm really excited about the option to do that. I want to also mention that we will be piloting in January, meal delivery program. Initially at Orchards and at Covington, where families within the boundary will be able to go onto an online forum and request meals for the week, and we will deliver them to their homes as opposed to everybody having to come in. We'll use some of our staff to make those deliveries, and if it's successful, we would expand on that. They can go out and deliver a week's worth of breakfast and meat and lunches. That's, I think, a really good thing. They're going to be working on that project. And then I just really want to say, I mean, honestly, I could talk forever, but I just want to, I, I want to continue to thank our families, thank our staff, because folks just continue to persevere through a very difficult situation. We're going on now eight-plus months of this. And it, I know the Governor Inslee extended his moratorium another several weeks. I know that our Open Public Meeting Acts, Meetings Act proclamation was extended through the late January, I think the nineteenth of January. Folks are tired, you know, our, our staff is tired, our, our students are tired. But kids just keep persevering. When I see things like the North Side Choir, the North Side Festival, where we had students from the north side of the district, led by our Heritage Choir Director, as well as other teachers within the district, put out their virtual song, was unbelievable. We've still got staff coming in, working with kindergarten students. We've got staff working with students on IEPs. We've got staff coming in, working with students on the student engagement teams. We've got coaches still in small groups, following the guidelines, working with kids. We have so many people that are there for our students and continue to want to be there for the students and are really frustrated themselves by what's happening around the world. And I just want to thank everyone for that. It, it's, it's been a long run. But I want to leave, I kind of want to leave, like for myself, this is, I, I just want to always remember to be thankful and grateful that we have the opportunity to lead through this situation. It's a very difficult situation. But we have the ability to bring some of our expertise. We have the ability to collaborate, work together on what are some of the best things we can do for our community. I'm thankful I'm in the spot I'm in. It's a tough spot. I'm thankful I get to work with our staff. I'm thankful I get to work with all of you. And I guess I just want to leave it with that. And we're going to keep working hard for the kids. That's why we're here. It's all about the kids. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
You kind of stole my thunder about the choir thing, but that's okay. Thank you for mentioning that.
What else did you want to mention, Rob? I'll steal your, your thunder for that, too.
Yeah.
I'll shut up.
I, I just have to agree so much about the music, the efforts of the music teachers. Thank you for mentioning that.
They do get creative on those Zoom events. It's pretty exciting. Thanks, Mike. Appreciate it. Now for some good news. Our Director of Communications, Ms. Gail Spohler, is here to bring us some uplifting and inspiring news.
I am, and there might be a couple of music references in there as well. First of all, as we scan down in the good news, which is online there for you. You know, you mentioned briefly the Evergreen School District Foundation and your role on it, Victoria, as well as some of the other community and staff members. And we just wanted to thank them for some of their work over the past month or so. Some small donations and some very large donations. They were able to secure three hundred backpacks. You see the picture there. A lot of times we get donated, they're really cute elementary backpacks, and we forget that our middle school and high school students also are in need of backpacks. So the foundation provided three hundred backpacks that are mostly aimed at our middle school and high school students, and they were delivered up to Evergreen High School's Community Resource Center, and so those will be distributed. More importantly, the delayed gala that was supposed to happen last March and was rescheduled in just last month, we thought at one point it might be in person, and then it went virtual. And I think we were all really pleasantly surprised at how fun the virtual gala was. And not only was it fun, it was very profitable. Over a hundred thousand dollars was raised from our greater community, and that will be distributed through grants and other programs over the next coming years. So good work by the foundation. Our Legacy High School staff, as you know, they have some students that sometimes can be hard to engage. And if you scroll down just a little bit to the Legacy High School piece. And so our, our staff at Legacy High School is always worried about how they can
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, it muted itself. Our Legacy staff is always concerned about how they can continue to connect and support their students. So they put together some care packages with donations from Cher and Clark County Food Bank. But more importantly than just providing the packets, they went out and made one-on-one connections with over a hundred ninety students that are enrolled at Legacy, and so good work from them. You know, we, our schools have, again, looked for creative ways that they can be involved. As you know, our deaf and hard-of-hearing program is at Furcrest Elementary. And so the staff there decided that they would actually broaden the ASL work that they do in the classroom to the broader Furcrest community. So they opened an ASL club for their fourth and fifth graders, and that has met with great success. And so not only are they learning ASL, American Sign Language, but they're also learning the history of the, of American Sign Language. And then that continues to make that community of the hard-of-hearing program within Furcrest a little bit more approachable for the students there and part of that community. So over at Heritage, their ASL student staff and parents collaborated to produce an ASL song that was sung by a former Heritage High School student graduate. And they put it out just in time for World Kindness Day. You know, I know one of the things that we all missed during November was the Veterans Day celebrations. Those are always fun, and our schools do a great job of celebrating. Our schools continue to do a great job of celebrating even in a virtual environment. And Endeavor put together just a very, very charming Veterans Day assembly that featured all of their students, providing and honoring the veterans that they would like to have done in person, but it's really charming if you hadn't had a chance to look. And how many of you like Brussels sprouts? It probably took you even a bit of time, the courage to take your first bite, if you haven't already, if you, if you have or haven't. But that's why Chartwells decided to make Brussels sprouts maybe more fun for students so that they would be encouraged to take a bite perhaps at the Thanksgiving table. And so you can see Chartwells and the Furcrest community carrying up to feature Brussels sprouts as students stop to pick up meals during the daily meal pickup. So there you go. And you know, our staff continues to innovate on how to deliver engaging curriculum. And so what you see in front of you right now is a frontier middle school, they prepared science experiment kits with several different science experiments. And so they distributed them to students, had them follow instructions, as well as doing it within the Zoom classroom. And so if all went well in those experiments, elephants in our community will have toothpaste. Not quite sure, elephant toothpaste, but that was the, the end game on one of the science experiments. Again, making it fun and intriguing and engaging for our students. A couple of our highest-viewed social media posts over the last month include a story of a former Riverview student who is now returning to teach side-by-side with her former kindergarten teacher. And so if you haven't had a chance to take a look at that story, it, it's just charming, and it's exactly what we've talked about for years as far as growing our own and welcoming them back into our community. Then another of our highest social media posts was, again, as Rob referenced, one of the innovative music programs that have happened. Covington Frontier Middle School choir teacher put together a presentation where they combined the two choirs. And so you can imagine how many students that involved from two different schools collaborating to produce one beautiful song. It garnered so much attention that KGW also actually came out and interviewed our teacher, Britta Hobbs, and featured the performance, as well as talking with two of the students, one from Covington and one from Frontier, about that collaboration process. So Thanksgiving always brings out a lot of great work by our schools and students. And again, no exception, all of our four comprehensive high schools did tremendous food drives with Cher to raise awareness and, and bringing a lot of food for our families. Mountain View also was part of that. They also worked with their Mandy's pantry. And then the Finley family, who are owners of some of our area restaurants, to put together more than a hundred food boxes for Thanksgiving, including frozen turkeys and all of the trimmings. And then they delivered those to the hundred families that had been identified in the community. You'll see, next month, I'll have more of the work that's being done in our schools, again, to support our families. And then I would be remiss if I didn't end the good news with our wonderful recognition of our wonderful Board of Directors. The sixth time in ten years that you've been recognized for exemplary work by WASTA as a Washington State School Board of Distinction. And I'll go ahead and point out, just like we did in the social media post, this photo is from 2019's award. So it was okay back in 2019 that you guys could stand that close together and not wear masks. We just have a recent photo, and so that's the photo from last year's ceremony. But accomplishments are probably even greater this year as you were recognized at the recent conference.
Thank you. We love the good news. We need it right now more than ever. Now we have to go back to Mike and get budget news.
Perhaps if he did it in a Zoom concert, it would be better.
I think so, or a TikTok dance or something.
There we go.
Yeah, no, I don't think, there, there are some TikTok dances out there I've seen, but I don't, I don't think I'll be participating in any of those. Or if I have, I'm going to do my best to make sure you never see them.
They always, they always manage to come out.
So financial report. I, I also, in that legislative forum, basically, I kind of mentioned, that's what the legislators wanted to know. But the, the districts were sharing the areas of, of concern and areas that the districts believe that the legislature could help us. So among the vaccine, vaccination conversation, we also talked about the shortfalls that districts are facing. And we've talked at length about our enrollment decline. At this point, we're, you know, we had already budgeted for about a four hundred and fifty, four hundred seventy-five student enrollment decline before COVID hit us. At this point, I think that we likely will be impacted about a thousand students in the basic ed program. I think some of the, some of the, like our Cascadia accounts a little higher than what it might have been. And also, I, we've seen a lot of, I think our kids moved to the Home Choice Academy. So the Home Choice Academy numbers are up compared, but within the schools, we're down almost four, probably between fourteen hundred and fifty and fifteen hundred kids this year. That's a significant amount of, of revenue that we've been impacted. We shared that information. Transportation, we've talked also from the beginning about the concern around transportation. We have three points of time that we count our, our students, that you have to actually transport students in order to count students and receive revenue for them. Twenty-five percent of that is in the fall count in October. We had about ten percent of what we typically would transport in our fall count. There was a, there's a January count, which we will not have likely any more kids transported than we did in the fall. And then the spring count is typically from the spring before. So the state has held us harmless on that, so we would get the full amount from last spring, even though we weren't at school last spring, but they're giving us the full amount. The estimate is that we'll receive about fifty-ish percent of what we typically get. We typically get about sixteen million. So I had kind of optimistically hoped the cut might be three to five million. We're probably talking about more like a, a seven, eight million dollar cut in transportation. I believe what I shared with our folks between, with the legislators between the enrollment declines in basic ed, which then that restricts some special ed students we can be funded for, the transportation impacts, and then increased unemployment cooperative rates due to the number of furloughed staff that we have throughout the cooperative. There's probably close to a ten, twenty million dollar hit on us this year, which we've done a lot to mitigate already with things that we've, you know, obviously, we've furloughed a number of employees. But our, our interest is in bringing students back as, as quickly and as safely as possible. So a number of those classified staff have been brought back. I think about thirty-five percent of the hours that we had furloughed have been brought back at this point. But I just want to kind of give a frame of reference. Rob was a member of a budget committee. And Victoria was a board member through the cuts from oh-eight, oh-nine through eleven, twelve. We had about twenty-six million that we eliminated in that four-year period, oh-eight, oh-nine, nine, ten, ten, eleven, eleven, twelve. That twenty million would be a number that we wouldn't have necessarily been aware of until school started this year. You know, we typically have the opportunity to go through some forums and have processes and have opportunities to share. Well, our forums, if we were able to have them, would have all been largely, well, they all would have been Zoom forums. So my message to the legislators was, we have a real, we have a real problem this school year. I, you know, the state revenue shortfall was initially projected at almost nine billion dollars over a, basically a three-year period, when they looked at that initially back in June of twenty. Every updated revenue forecast, that's gotten better. I think the number that they're looking at now, which would have been probably not figuring on the types of extensions of shutdowns and restrictions that the governors put in place now through, I think, the beginning of January. But that nine billion dollar figure was down to three billion, thereabouts, which in my mind, you know, you're getting, that number is getting closer to a number that number is getting closer to a number within the rainy day fund that the state has potentially to help us through that. So at the same time, you know, we honestly are looking for support from Olympia, whether that's through a hold harmless on enrollment, if that's the right way, a hold harmless somehow on transportation. There have been Superintendent Reichdahl talked today about, you know, the most recent information on the federal stimulus is they're looking at a $900 billion potential program. But where a day or two ago, they felt pretty comfortable about this happening. Now there's more concern that there's a fracturing of the votes on that. Within that likely would be money to help save, not save, but help support state budgets. But even with that, that it's important, how does the state distribute it? So our request would be do whatever they can around old harmless enrollment, transportation. And if they do receive federal stimulus monies that cares to, or whatever they want to call it, do their best to distribute that as quickly as possible. His conversation today was it could drag on and on. You know, we'll get to the point where we need to start building budgets for 21, 22 in the in the, you know, late winter, early spring. And if we don't have answers from a long legislative session or from the federal government, that's going to put more pressure on us. I do think personally that the 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 potential for a vaccine, depending on how that's handled, gives us some hope with respect to enrollment. But but if our, honestly, a $20 million hit, you know, we come into the year with a $28 million reserve, I, you know, we could see an eight to $10 million impact on our fund balance if we don't do more than we've already done at this point. And I don't think anybody could reasonably think about building a budget for next year based upon enrollment that doesn't exist. And then especially if we've seen a decline in our fund balance, bank on a smaller fund balance to bail us out of another problem next year. So there's no question in my mind, we'll be dealing with some reductions for 21, 22. And I think that there's likely further reductions even this school year that we'll have to look at. I talk about this with the superintendent every week. Everybody's on the same page. Everybody's got different pressures they're facing. I think Camus and both Camus and Richfield have had public protests at the district office about trying to pressure the district to get students back into school. So there are a lot of pressures that districts are facing. We are as well. But but I am, I am optimistic. I am optimistic that we'll have students back at some point this spring. And and I think, you know, there are a lot of, particularly our kindergarten class this year. We had budgeted for over 1,600 students and we're a little over 1,300. Those students will come back. My belief is they will come back. And I think our middle schools and our high schools have stayed relatively flat or even up a little bit. It's really elementary where this is impacted. But you know, the thing about it is, like I've said so many times, we don't exist without students. And I and I say that just basically to say our priority is our kids. And so that's why we have to find money for a summer option for kids to give them the ability to to catch up where they might have lost. We we have to, I am very optimistic that there's a lot of demand that's building up throughout the community for kids. Kids know they want to be in school at this point. Parents see the value of school that they always have, but they see it even more than they have now. I'm very thankful that the voters passed in 2018, the bond passed in 2019, the operations levy, because when kids come back, they're going to have some facilities that are unbelievable to access in our new elementary schools. We'll have five next fall. We'll have a new legacy. We'll have a new transitions program. We'll have a new Hollingsworth Academy. We've got new fields being put up, made available throughout the district through field turf. So we and we've talked about this at Caverden as well. We have to be ready the very first day that that we have the opportunity to bring kids back. And we have to greet all of our students with what everything we have to offer for them. And I know that our staff is up to up to that. But there, you know, we've, as like I said earlier, Victoria, you and Rob are very well aware. And Rachel and Jenny and Julie as well, because basically, since I've been in this spot, we're looking at something along the lines of over $30 million worth of impact between the budget cuts that we made that first spring and then what we're facing right now. We, and that's what I said, we'll get, we'll get through it. We will get through it. We will figure it out. We will figure out the path. But if they can help us in Olympia in a, not an ongoing thing, we don't need this to be a bow wave. But we do need help right now. And I think it's imperative that we all know, Rob, through his role on the legislative committee, we're all going to have opportunities to share our story with legislators. And we do every day. But we need to let them know our story like other districts are letting legislators know our story. We do great things in our district. We do great things for kids. We're doing great things for kids right now. And we just have to continue to make sure that the focus is always on kids. And we'll, we'll, we'll get through this and we'll be, we'll talk about what's happening and we'll continue to likely talk talk all spring, which I know Gail gets the opportunity to say a lot of good news when she does hers. This isn't always good news, but the good news is I think that we've done this before. We have experience and we can lead lead the district through this situation as well. And we'll make difficult decisions, but we'll make we'll make the right decisions. And as the board has always done, I remember in the cuts from 08, 09, 9, 10, four priorities. The school, the school, what's happening in our buildings. Continue professional development, keep working with our staff on getting better every day. Making sure that our facilities are in good shape, making sure we maintain our facilities and and making sure everyone is safe and secure as well as possible. Those are the priorities. And I don't know that anyone would say that they've changed because they all focus on kids. So I just wanted to share, we will face more difficulty through the rest of the year and into next year. But we're on top of it and we'll continue to communicate on it. And I'm happy to answer any questions, folks, any of you might have on any of this stuff.
Well, I do remember the last cuts and it's never pretty. But I do trust that we'll get through it and that we'll find a way to make this work. And that as long as we keep everything centered on what's best for our kids and and look at it from, you know, an all district scenario, I think that we will make the right decisions. And we're grateful that we have you here to help us figure that out. It's not easy and I know it's very stressful and I appreciate all the hard work that you guys have been putting in because this has not been an easy year by any stretch. And I think we've done very well in light of the difficulties and keeping things going. And we've been getting, you know, like we've been getting some nice letters and things from people. You can't make everybody happy in any of these situations, but we've got a lot of people that are feeling good about how we're handling in a very difficult time, and I appreciate that.
Thanks.
Any other questions for Mike? Okay, well, now we are moving on to citizen comments. And this is time for citizens who wish to address the board on matters that were not on the agenda tonight, are not personnel or legal in nature. We're happy to hear what you have to say and we ask that you keep your comments to three minutes. Lori, do we have, who's up first on this one?
Director Bradford, Julia Apple is up first and she should be on.
Okay, great. Julia, we're here to listen.
Well, unfortunately, it appears that she's using an older version of Zoom and I don't think she's going to be able to access it according to the moderator.
Okay.
Can we turn Jennifer Bradley? So we're going to go ahead and unmute Jennifer Bradley.
All right. Just a second, please.
Jennifer?
Is that working now?
It sure is.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for your patience. So my name's Jennifer Bradley. I am a first grade teacher. I live in Vancouver on 30th Avenue. And I was speaking tonight in support for something that I believe Julie and maybe Sarah were going to present or propose. So I'll just sort of speak generally and hope that they can still get on and and say their piece. But I'm speaking as a concerned citizen and educator to show my support for our fellow concerned citizens, community members and educators who are imploring our school districts to please put students, staff and community safety first and do everything that we can to help control and contain COVID. I know the board members are well read and informed about COVID, so I won't repeat all of the most recent numbers, facts and research. But we all know that our local numbers are extremely high and have been growing exponentially over the past few weeks and are expected to continue to rise in what's been described as surge upon surge, both locally and nationally in the coming weeks. We're all aware of our many healthcare system services providers and equipment locally and nationally are being overwhelmed and overtaxed, are in short supply and are projected to only get worse in the coming days and weeks. I believe that community health and safety are always a top priority for our schools before, during and after COVID. And I stand with others here tonight who hopefully will also have a chance to speak and asking that Evergreen Public Schools does everything possible, including but not limited to suspending in-person services while our numbers are surging and remaining extremely high and that we all do our part in mitigating the devastating effects of COVID in our local community and put health and safety first. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
So next is Sarah Van. It might take just a second.
Okay. Can you hear me?
Yes, yeah.
Hi, so my name is Sarah Van. I'm the teacher for students with visual impairments in the district. And this is an initiative that I've been working on with Julia Apple. She is the developmental skills teacher at Hearthwood Elementary School. I would like to read a letter that we wrote and that has already gained in less than 24 hours over 100 signatures from members of the Evergreen, Evergreen employees. But first off, I just wanted to thank you guys for your time. I know that this is a very, very challenging time. There's so much conflict and, you know, in opinions with how the COVID situation is being handled in our schools. And we really, really appreciate all the thought and all the action that you guys are doing during this time. So I'm going to go ahead and read our letter. Dear members of the school board, we are all aware of the many negative impacts remote learning has had on our school community, including students, families and staff. Often described as challenging, we understand that remote learning does not meet the educational, emotional and general needs of students. Many students, families and staff who have been participating in in-person services this school year have reported positively. Students enjoy being in their schools with their peers. Childcare burdens are lightened for our families and educators are back in their second homes, their classrooms. In-person learning provides a sense of normalcy during such an unprecedented time. This request is not cause to advocate for distance versus in-person learning, a controversy about which much of our community is divided. We are requesting temporary action to help minimize the spread of COVID-19 in our area. We are writing to ask that you support an educational initiative that fosters the physical health and safety of our students, families and staff during this upcoming holiday season. This letter is to ask you to consider providing only virtual services during the week after winter break, January 4th through 8th, for all students who are currently receiving in-person services. Mandating virtual learning after winter break will supply students and staff with a built-in quarantine period directly after the Christmas holiday, as recommended by Governor Inslee. This will serve as a buffer to reduce holiday-related transmission of COVID-19 in our schools. Many of us felt the unease of returning to in-person school after the Thanksgiving break, knowing students and staff had gathered in unregulated groups during the holiday. Clark County Public Health has only confirmed our fears by documenting rising numbers of cases within our community. As increases are published weekly and as we prepare for the upcoming Christmas holiday that much of our community celebrates, our concerns grow with validation. Even with the limited number of people present on our campuses, numerous numerous staff and students have either been exposed to or infected by COVID-19. Positive cases have been reported in 18 of our district buildings and staff and students have been quarantined, fallen ill and even hospitalized. Each time someone has an exposure or is confirmed to have COVID-19, quarantine protocols are enacted to decrease the likelihood of an outbreak. With the rise in community cases, the likelihood that students and staff will need to go into quarantine will only increase, causing possible staff shortages, unplanned educational disruption for our students and an increase in potential spread when placing new staff members in classrooms where there is a risk of a possible outbreak. We could face the disparity of entire classrooms being shut down due to mandatory quarantine or lack of staffing. You are empowered with the capacity and privilege to save lives this holiday season. We urge you to take the necessary steps and mandate that our students who are currently receiving in-person services receive virtual services the week after our scheduled winter break. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Sarah.
Those were the only two people that signed up that are actually on the meeting at this time.
Okay. Well, great. Well, I appreciate everyone who's participated tonight. It was good discussion, not always easy, but it was good. Okay, so, um, next, oops, let's see.
Board comments.
Yep. Thank you.
I'll help you.
I keep flipping back and forth between the different deals that you sent me. Okay, so now it's time for comments by the board. Is there anything anyone on the board would like to share with us? Rob, you always have stuff.
I don't want to go first.
You go right ahead.
Okay, here it comes. It's like I quipped a little bit about the music concerts. I had an interaction, an email interaction with Billy Dule, Heritage High School, the choir director at the high school, who with a team of friends funded by, I think, a district grant, were able to produce the the fall concert theater pattern we're used to going to and speaking at to thank people for their local support of music in all of our schools. And I know I'm not the only one who loves that concert. The, if you'll permit me a vulnerability, the performances that he sent to me brought tears to my eyes and a feeling of grief about what we're missing out on, but also of just gratefulness for the beauty that our students can express when they and their teachers collaborate like this. I don't know how they engineered the sound to be that good, given the microphones on all the Chromebooks.
Oh, it's amazing.
It's amazing and I just want to express my enthusiasm and support for this effort and hope that it will continue until the day we can all come and sing together. Because I sure want to come sing with the kids now. We're going to talk about the WASTA conference later on, so I'll do that then. I wanted to say, just as a comment, that as I was listening to the concern people have over COVID-19, I'm aware of the health department's support or report of data regarding school COVID cases. And as near as I can tell from looking over how they've organized it, it's not spreadsheet the way I might like to have data presented. But there are two active cases reported as connected to two of our schools right now. The other cases are far too old to still be operative. They're over two weeks, right? So if I use the 14-day quarantine period, we have recoveries and some So if I use the 14-day quarantine period, we have recoveries and some tragic hospitalizations, but two cases are active. If I use the 10-day, then no cases are active. But that suggests to me, with my compliments, that the protocols in use in the schools, the 10% of students that we have there now, are working to prevent transmission of disease in the schools. And I know that they're watching data and reports and workforce levels and everything. And if I'm not mistaken, Mike, we put a hold on increasing the number of in-person services for now based on the county's recommendations. Is that true?
That's correct.
Yeah. So I don't see an increase in it, but I also don't see the transmission of disease inside the schools. If there's other data or more pertinent or relevant data, we should, we need to see that in order to change that decision, in my view. I appreciate the board's support for the legislative representative role. This is going to be the hardest. This is going to be the hardest session, and I'm going to need help from the other four from time to time. I've got some ambitions. I've got some ambitions about getting students before the committees for testimony, because like Mike said, we have good stories to tell, and we need to be telling them. And this is a session where they have to take remote testimony, so we have a real opportunity to give students that opportunity without needing to take them anywhere. We can get on a Zoom meeting with the legislature and the committees can interact with our kids. And that's a hope I've had for years and years, that we figure out a way to do that without imposing a travel burden on kids. So I hope to get support in finding those students. I had an opportunity in connection with WASDA's Legislative Committee to fill out a survey about school resource officers. Shane Gardner, our security and safety director, gave me a lot of good information to add to the survey, and I actually reached out in my own person to find students to help answer those questions. So I had some conversations with students over Zoom meetings. Really thoughtful people, not all of them leadership kids. Some of them are Skill Center and Cascadia Tech students and other spectra. I spoke with a graduate who was extremely thoughtful about the proposal. The survey was around proposed language for a bill. Then the students responded extremely thoughtfully to the bill and modified what I might have typed in. And I hope to be able to continue that and expand it so that we get as many voices from as many students as possible into WASDA's committees and into the legislature. It's more important than ever. Really appreciate the mayor saying what she did. And the last thing I had was that in connection with, I guess, most of the legislative work, National School Board Association's Equity Symposium, which is usually January, February, in Washington DC in person, is online this year, and it is no costly. So we can all have an opportunity to attend the National Equity Symposium and hear from speakers. That symposium was where I heard some of the most revelatory things about equity work, kind of knocked me out of my lane and liberated me for more equity work. The day on the hill that we talk about sending a representative or not to is postponed until June, so we have time to continue talking about that, whether or not that's applicable for us. I think that's all I had, aside from just appreciating the public feedback that we're getting and the thoughtful care that people are putting into what they're telling us. I've met with some teacher friends and heard a lot of stressful stories and continue to acknowledge, like, Mike, this is hard. This is really hard. And I'm hoping we can invent some opportunities for people just to talk to us and tell us about it, good and bad, because we need both. Thanks, Victoria.
Victoria, I think that there is one gentleman that had signed up that we missed, Andy. And I think Lori, they've got him. I think he signed up for Citizen Comments, and we missed him.
Oh, let's get him on here then.
Yeah.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Hi, Andy.
Awesome. Thank you so much, Mike, for making that happen. Honestly, Mike, you kind of took the wind out of my sails. I had a lot of things to say, and you kind of said all of the things that I really wanted to say about getting the kids back in school. One thing that I don't think anybody pointed on is, you know, everybody's talking about the health and safety of, you know, the people who catch COVID, but nobody's really pointing on the fact that social isolation with the kids has got more of a negative effect on the kids than COVID is having on the people who contract it. You know, studies have been done for years and years, hundreds of years, in fact. It dates all the way back to the 13th century with the Frederick's experiment, when they socially isolated kids to see how they would react, and most of them died. And, you know, it's sad that it's having such an effect, but the sad truth is that it is. Dr. Daniel Amen wrote a piece on social isolation in young developing minds and the fact that it literally has an effect on their immune system, which makes them more susceptible to getting sick in times when they're lonely. And I think these are things that we would really need to focus on as well. I mean, it's almost a lesser of two evil things. I'm not saying that COVID's not real, you know, because obviously it is, but, you know, I really want to start focusing on what affects this isolation is having on our kids. I have two boys that are 12 and 14, and my 12-year-old, in the last eight months, has gained 50 pounds. I got an email from his math teacher who said that he hadn't turned in a math assignment in over a month. And I'm like, well, why is it taking you so long to recognize this? I know he's been doing them, but, you know, you get back to me in a month with this. And that's, the thing is, is their kids aren't getting enough focus. You know, everybody's parents, all the kids' parents are working. You know, a lot of these kids are home alone. A lot of the parents rely on the school for so many different things, you know, food. You know, like you said, childcare. The kids need to be held accountable. I mean, kids need to, they need social interaction for their development physically. And I think that's one thing we need to really, really focus on. You know, I know you mentioned something about vaccine. I would venture to say that half of the parents are not going to let their kids get vaccines, regardless whether it means they go back to school or not. So that's something to also consider. There's going to be a lot of pushback on that, if that's the, if that's the deal. You know, and if we're waiting on guidelines from a health organization to get back in school, I think we're going to be waiting a long time, because I don't think this thing is as bad as the health organizations are telling us. I mean, if we're risking the welfare or well-being of our kids on a virus that you have to be tested to know you have, in which the test consists of shoving a giant swab all the way down into the back of your head to tell that you have it, I mean, that's, it doesn't, something's not adding up. And our kids, my kids, your kids, all of our kids are suffering because of this. And it's time to possibly reevaluate where the information that we're getting about this COVID is coming from and also look into a little bit deeper what the effects of this isolation is having on our kids. And that's all I have.
Thank you, Andy. Sorry we missed you.
Thank you.
Okay, let's go back to board comments. Julie, anything from you tonight?
Yeah, a couple of things. I know we're going to talk about WASDA later too. But over the course of the last couple of weeks, I had an opportunity to be a judge for We the People. So the program continues, you know, continues on. It's part of the AP Government Class at Heritage High School and Evergreen, and they compete in the We the People competition. Civics class, obviously way different doing it virtual. There, I think that, you know, and as we talk about, and I've kind of had an opportunity to experience some of these, and I also sat in on a virtual sports development class at Evergreen High School. And I had technology issues. I couldn't get my microphone to work because of the security piece in Google Classroom, which is great, because then it just isn't letting anybody in there and start talking, right? But that was one of the issues. And then I think that they invited me back, and we had some network issues the next time, but not any fault, like, thing I was doing, but it just, the network was down. So I can see the frustrations that are, you know, kids or community and everybody's going through. And I think that there's been some great things that have happened with online learning and kind of like we talked about earlier in the meeting about having online forums and maybe inviting, because it's a platform to get more people to participate. If you don't go out on a cold rainy night, you can sign, you can watch from your living room, right? And I think it's fantastic that we are, that we're offering more opportunities for people to participate. And I think that we've gotten super creative with our, you know, the choir concerts, fantastic. And I love seeing all of this creativity that's coming out of it, plus these kids are super smart with technology. They can figure all of it out. But I do understand the part that we're missing from the in-person and getting kids back in the classroom. And, you know, I'm hopeful that with what Mike said earlier, that, you know, if we get the vaccine and we can, you know, get to a hybrid part and get some kids back in the classes spring, and so they can participate in some of these activities and be with each other and get back on the trajectory of, you know, where they need to be. So anyways, it was really interesting having that opportunity to be in the virtual classroom as, you know, as a judge for the We the People, and then sitting in and listening to the kids in their class. I got to listen to them as they, as they did their class virtual.
That's great. Thanks, Julie. Ginny? Anything newsy for us tonight?
Um, I think Rob covered a lot of what we've been doing. I did have the opportunity to meet with a class of juniors and seniors at Heritage to go over digital learning and just kind of give them a platform to let me know just kind of what was going on, their struggles, what's been working and what's not. And then, you know, just realizing that each, each teacher and each student is individual, and each person learns and responds and reacts differently. And sometimes that can be frustrating to other people on the other side. And so I think just being mindful and remembering to give everybody some grace. And then, you know, just trying to stay on top of as much as we can. It's not easy. You know, I'm working from home as well with three children. And I got that email the other day from the teacher about one, you know, it's, you think you're on it, and then you realize you're not. So I just, we're all struggling. But it was good to see the kids, even if it was over a computer, and to have a conversation with them and to kind of just find out how they're all doing and, you know, just reminding them to take care of themselves and to be healthy.
Yeah. Thanks for that. Okay, Rachel, anything you want to add?
No, I don't think I have anything to add tonight.
All right. Thank you, Rachel. I did want to clarify something, just for those listening. We've been talking about our conference that we'll be discussing in our workshop. We did a virtually, three-day conference, virtually, was a bit challenging for me because I'm squirreling in my seat, but it was still really informative and really good. So anyway, but I wanted the public to know, we did not go anywhere and didn't meet any place in person. Okay, does anyone have anything else to add? Okay, well then, let's move on to future agenda items. Is there anything to be suggested by the board? If you can't think of anything tonight, please feel free to just email me and let me know if anything pops up that's on your mind.
I think we'd be taking some wisdom, I guess, shared by the discussions we've had and figure out a way to open up some kind of town hall forum for all of this. I think it would be good to get people together to let them talk to us about what it's been like and, you know, teacher, student, parent, stakeholder, taxpayer. This is a year where we keep listening harder, and I don't have any answers, because the technology is in the way. It's also an enabler.
Yeah, yeah, it's true.
It'll be second best, but that's what's on my mind, is how do we listen better? Even when we can't get together, I want to be doing some of that. And if it's all right, if we don't do it institutionally, I want to be asking individuals to just come forward and say, they set up a Zoom meeting with a board member and just talk. Right? Do you guys have time for that? I don't know. I know how much time I have, but I want that open to the public, and I want folks to understand. Trying to think of a way to do it.
Yeah. Thanks, Rob. Okay, well, now we will go into recess, where we'll just take a few minutes break. Then we will return for a board workshop. We'll cover the 2021-22 school calendar, our teaching and learning equity update. We'll have a debrief on the conference, a legislative update, and a board meeting debrief. After that, we will go into an executive session to review the performance of a public employee. So we'll go ahead and take a break now for, how, did you guys, how much time do you need? About five minutes? Okay, we'll take a five-minute break, and then we'll be back. Okay. Just waiting on Julie.
I'm here.
Oh, you're there? Okay, good. I didn't see you. We've got Rachel, we've got Ginny. Okay. Looks like we've got everybody here that we need. All right, so first up is the 2021-22 calendar.
And Janay's going to talk a little bit about the calendar for next year that they've been working, looking at.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Hi.
Hi.
The calendar is very similar to our current school year, the 2021. Labor Day falls right around the same time. So if you look, we color-coded it for you. The first day of school would be August 31st, with the ending of the last day of school of June 15th. We've added in all of our regular extra days that we do during the spring. We had an open bargain with EEA, and we added a half-day of training for equity. That was added in on August 26th. I've spoken with all of the school districts in our county to make sure that we all have the same winter break and spring break. So all of that has been confirmed. And it just happened to, again, flow just like it does this current school year with an even two weeks for the winter break, first full week for spring break. We have the snow days, and everything else is basically the same. I've talked with EEA, and they also have taken it to their group. And Cabinet has seen it as well, and then we brought it for a draft for the school board.
Okay, comments, questions?
Are the dates for, I think it's November and December?
Are the dates for, I think it's November and December. Are those the wrong years on there? Yeah, I thought I saw that earlier.
Yep, they are. Thank you.
These are the weeks line up with November and December of 2021, right?
Yeah. Yeah. I think it's just a typo in the header part, but we'll fix that. Thank you.
It looks fine to me. It looks pretty just standard, like what we would normally follow.
Yeah.
Is this scheduled diversity training optional or mandatory?
It's one of their extra days. So it's not part of their base contract. So, um, they're expected to know the content, even if they didn't attend the training.
And how do we know if they know the content?
I don't know what the plan is for that day. I think Clarissa is going to be leading that day. So I don't know what, uh, they're doing, but my guess is, there would be some type of PowerPoints or something available that they would have to make sure that they did on their own time is typically how we handle those days. And I noticed since Julie pointed that out, that February through June should be 22. So all of those will fix.
This puts graduations roughly, uh, weekend, the ninth, 10th, 11th, 13th, right?
I'd have to ask Mike. I'm not, I'm not sure what they're planning for that.
You screw, uh, yeah, I mean, I would think that, that sounds good. Last day of school is the 16th. So usually would, yeah, it'd be the week before that, I would think. We, we did it the 10th. So it looked like it'd be likely the 10th and the 11th. I mean, we, we did, uh, they were Friday and Saturday. We did, what did we do? One Friday night and three on Saturday? Isn't that right? I guess we did two, two on Friday. Yeah. So we do.
We usually have some on Thursday.
We, yeah, and then transitions. Yeah. So we, I would think we do two on the 10th and three on the 11th.
There's a, yeah. Transitions, legacy.
Well, I guess that's right. I think we did two, two on Thursday, two on Friday and three on Saturday.
Yeah.
It was a busy week.
Um, and we'll be doing that here in just six months or so.
That would be awesome if we get to do that this year.
Hopefully we'll be out of the woods.
We'll figure out how to do it.
Nice. That's good to see something normal.
Yeah.
Thank, thanks, Janay.
Yep. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Okay.
Does that come back for a first reading then?
Yes. Yeah. So we'll get, will we get our first reading in January?
Yes, it's already on the agenda.
Okay, great. Perfect. Thank you. Okay. So moving on, let's, uh, talk about teaching and learning equity update. Our favorite subject. And I'm serious.
And I think Julie and Clarissa are speaking today. I'm not sure who's starting.
That would be me.
There you go.
Yeah. Um, so good evening, everyone. And I just have a few equity updates to share with you all. So I'm really excited that we have officially, um, completed the courageous conversation, the experience professional development for all of our certificate staff, minus about 60 folks who couldn't attend at that time, but we do have a makeup session scheduled for them. Um, and that is huge. Now all of our teachers have a, um, a reference and a tool to use, um, to have difficult conversations about inequities in our district. And that is just the beginning. Um, our building admin are continuing with their staff with, uh, the courageous conversation work throughout the year. Each month they have, um, sessions with the teachers where they get to practice using the protocol and having these difficult conversations. So I'm really excited about that. We are also, um, on meeting number three that'll take place on December 19th with our Equity Advisory Committee. This is a great group of folks. We have been looking at, um, equity policies, um, near and far as well as some equity lenses from other districts, um, to see which components we like to see live in ours. They're going to be making some suggestions based on their stakeholder groups and things that they have experienced. And after we receive the results and information from our audit, which is the third thing I'm going to update you on, that will further, um, inform, uh, what it is that we suggest for the, um, soon-to-be equity policy and equity list that will adopt for our district. Thirdly, you all will be hearing the presentation from Education Northwest, um, as they have completed our district's equity audit. They will be speaking to you all in a, in a special meeting on December 15th, which I'm also very excited about. They have got some great things to share with you. I had the opportunity to get just a bit of a preview of some of the data memos and rough drafts, some of the chapters to share. And we really have got, we're, we're doing great in some areas and the, the report will analyze and highlight that. But it'll also show us our, our areas of growth, um, which we do need to focus on. And that leads me to my last shareout, which relates to the comment that our citizen, um, put into the space a little bit earlier. We have begun our community, um, DEI groups. And actually on yesterday, we had our first two. So I had the pleasure of facilitating the Black and African-American DEI group and the Asian DEI group also took place on last night. And actually Julie had the pleasure of co-facilitating that, um, that gathering. We had an excellent time. We got to know each other a little bit better since we're going to be spending some time together throughout the years. And we also talked more about the purpose of those gatherings. And I want to, I want to pause and talk more about that, that purpose, just so that I can address the comment that that was made a little bit earlier, but then clear that up for you all as well. So the purpose of these, um, DEI gatherings are to surface and address, um, some of the concerns that our marginalized communities are experiencing. Um, and so in order to do that, we have to go directly to the source, directly to those marginalized groups to find out what it is they're experiencing so that we can then help support. Right? So we just don't want to listen. These aren't just listening, great district with community, um, solutions to their concerns. And just like any really awesome teacher, when they've noticed that, that certain, uh, groups of their students are not experiencing success, like some of the other students may be, you want to do some very folk with those students. And that's what these groups are. And so these are just strategic groupings rather than thinking of them as separating out or segregating out, um, our communities. And so when you, when you are that great teacher that's looking for the opportunity to provide that focused support, sometimes you might have to pull a small group aside or ask some students to stay after so that you can provide for them that very focused attention. And that is what these groups are for. We want to provide that focused attention, um, and we want to do it in a collaborative way and not just assume that we, as the district, have all the answers. But that the communities that have been marginalized have feedback for us, have solutions for us to potentially implement to help them and then in turn help us as a district become stronger. And that was the final thing that I had to share with you all. Are there any questions?
Clarissa, do you have the coherent governance, um, suggestions for adding equity to the high-level board policies? They, they emailed something out a month ago.
They did?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I'll forward that to you. There are minor changes that I don't think go far enough personally. But if we're, if we're doing policy audits from top to bottom, then we've got to include the top. I'll email that to you with a copy to all the other relevant people.
Fantastic. Thank you so much. And if you don't have anything else, I'm going to pass it to Julie, who has some excellent things to share as well.
Where, oh, where is Julie?
Julie, don't miss that. We can't hear you. No.
You're muted, silly goose. There you go.
We can't hear you. Uh-oh.
It's muted again. Wow.
You might have to.
You look great, Julie.
Is that your voice controls on your computer?
I can maybe kind of get it started and then Julie can pop in as soon she gets her voice, her voice back. So this is about the school improvement plan. And you can see that there's a template. I don't know if you guys remember last year Legacy used it. It was a one-page template that we're going to ask schools to use this year. And it doesn't change the school improvement plan process. It's the same data. We still have all the plans with all the huge amounts of information. But we just thought it was a better way for the schools to tell their story in a three to five minutes and also give you kind of graphic organizer, help you see what's going on there. So Julie and her folks put together three different templates. So each school still will use a, a different template, but they're going to tell the story like that. So, we think it's a good way to go. It's going to help you guys, but also help the principals just have a better way to have a dialogue and a, and not expect that they get through the whole huge document and then you as well, you know, with the find, to cope more to the big stories and then how it ties to equity, their goals in the past and then their, what they've done this year and then kind of their goals for the future.
Do we have a link to this document yet?
I believe there is.
The board docs contain the link to a day in the life, which is a slideshow that links again to documents about daily learning.
We'll get you a link for that. For this. You can see just a little, little graphic. It's a snapshot of one of the templates and they all kind of look like that.
Right.
I don't know if you have any questions about that?
I do, Brian. I noticed on here, it's saying there's a board copy, but it'll remove all the links from the board copy. Why do we remove all the links?
Um, I might need Lori's help a little on this because I think there's, in some of the documents now, there's like, I think 120 links in some of these. So then as far as preparing them, I believe you get, is that right, Lori?
That's correct. Cause all of those have to be uploaded into Laserfish.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Can you hear me now?
Yay, yes.
Okay. I logged out and logged back in. Sorry about that.
That's okay.
It's all you, Julie. You're.
Okay. So it sounded like we're running over the template and the reason behind it. But again, we just wanted to streamline the information for the board and get you what you need in a timely manner. So the SIP presentations are coming back, um, coming up late January. And if you have any feedback on this, this is what we were looking at where schools would use this basic template. And there's a couple of different options of how many goals they're going to show, and you will still have access to the full SIP plan. But this will just be a quick guide for you to look at during the presentation.
Executive summaries.
Yes. And you know, I've been doing those for quite a few years and we, we know how the story can go. And so just trying to get to, some really good data for you to see and in a quick snapshot that then we can even use in future years as a look back as a quick snapshot to remember what happened in years past. All right. So the other portion I wanted to talk to you about was, um, there have been questions and we've talked about the instructional program and what does remote learning look like? And so we wanted to give you, um, a little visual into what the day in the life of our teachers and students are like. So the curriculum instruction department did a professional development last week with all of the administrators in the district. And part of it was to look at some best practices of teaching and learning in remote world. So in this sheet, and there are a bunch of links for you to look into, has some really cool ways to look at what is happening intellectually. One is the week of the glance document. So these are all public on all of our websites, but they show, yeah, if Lori can click on one. They show specifically how we're communicating to families and students what the week looks like. So it includes the live synchronous work as well as the on-demand or asynchronous work. And so that is a communication tool and a planning tool for teachers. In there, and as you look through the different levels and classes, you'll see a variety of different links and couple of them have links to a Padlet. And Padlet is a virtual app that's basically like a sticky note sheet that students can then, write down their thinking. And so it's also interesting to see these because they are communication devices between students and teachers. And in there, we took out the links to some of them that had recorded videos because we can't post those publicly. But the teachers, as they're recording them, they'll also post them here for the students. So the students that aren't able to attend live will have the information in there. So it's a really good communication tool. And then something that, um, eventually we want to show you is recorded videos. But what we have is a timestamp of the videos. And again, what I think is interesting of those is if we think about walking into a classroom, the different parts that you see walking in, sometimes we just get a 10-minute snapshot. Looking at those timestamps, we really see how the teachers are weaving in and out of direct instruction and group work and student thinking. So looking at those timestamps gives us another view into the classroom and to what's happening in kids and in their kids' daily life and schedule. So some really cool things are happening and we have a lot to highlight of the good, of the great things about remote learning. And we can't, we are super excited for when the time comes to be able to get back in, in person. But our teachers are really buying in to what this is and doing a great job for our students. So when you, when you have a moment, um, I would take some time and click through those and have a chance to see what's happening.
Julie, do you think that, um, our teachers will incorporate some of this into the classroom once they come back? That this is offering a better communication tool? Yeah. And planning, um, opportunity for them to, to do this in a different way than that they've done before?
For sure. We're trying to highlight those lessons learned of the good things about this and, and the work that the PLCs are doing to really plan together and distribute work. The amount of communication that we're able to do with parents has exploded and teachers keep saying parents are our best partners. And as hard it is for parents, they, they really are stepping up as partners and we are having better relationships with parents this year than ever before. And a lot of that is communicating what's happening and happening in the classroom. And I know as a parent, I don't always know what's happening in the classroom when my kids are back in school regular, but here I have a different view into it. So I definitely think that we are looking at what are those lessons learned? And what will we continue? But teachers are finding success in things that I don't necessarily think they would have known that they would have had success in before. So we're trying to capitalize on all of those pieces and use those in the future. All right.
These, uh, these what are you calling the, the
We get a glance?
Not the we get a glance. They, all these documents resemble what my son is seeing in each of his classes as well. The timestamp documents are an example of how, if I look at Peggy Lincoln first grade mill play, that's how the 53 minutes is being spent.
Yes. So that's the timestamp of a live session that she had. And we, we did use the video in the admin PD, but it includes students' names and pictures and we couldn't show that here. But
Of course, of course.
We went through and time stamped what's happening in each chunk so that we could learn from the different pivots and what are they doing instructionally?
This is a hard question to even ask, but how much engagement are students able to experience compared to a normal in-person hour? Like when I see kids doing remote learning and I've seen my son and a couple others, not all the cameras are on for reasons that are somewhere between, you know, it'd span the spectrum. There are good reasons not to turn a camera on in somebody's house. How are teachers able to feel, I guess, a sense of accomplishment about students accomplishing the learning? Do they have the tools, I guess, the mental tools that are the training that they need to perceive that in a, in a remote setting? I mean, I guess I'm asking about the frictions and the frustrations a little bit.
Yeah, I think that it's interesting, just like we have a country divided on, you know, or county on should we go back to school or not? Should we be remote or hybrid? There are students that are thriving in this world and that they can engage. They have found a voice in the remote learning. Whether the voice is through their chat, that they can type an answer versus having to speak it out loud. And making a video and not having to perform it. There are, there are ways that students are really thriving in that. And there are some students that need the in-person and that just can't wait to get back when we have hybrid, you know, and it's not their jam. So I think it's going to be, as we see engagement, we've looked at that in a lot of different ways. And it's not just, like you said, turning your camera on and being present. They're present in other ways as well. So teachers are finding ways to measure that. And definitely it's taking time, like it took some time in the fall. Like what does it look like? How do I make engaging lessons? And that's why we continue to do professional development around that. Like what, what, and how do we engage students in work virtually? And but I think they really are finding ways to have students thrive and use some of the tools that they did in the classroom. The Padlet that I was talking about before, that's a common tool that they use in the classroom and now they can also use it here. So not everything is just out the window of what they did in person. You know, they relying on good teaching is still good teaching and how we engage students and get them to be the processors of the knowledge and the thinkers in these. The students show up and they're showing up when they're engaged in those lessons. I don't know if I fully answered your question, Rob.
That's, uh, that's one of the lenses on there. I wonder, I wonder what we're losing as far as progress goes, you know, the arguments that folks are being left behind a year effectively because they're not there in person or but I'm also very interested in learning how teachers are perceiving their own sense of success. When the internet went down the other day, a teacher actually pinged me and said, guess what? The internet is down in our building again. And I feel like a flaky teacher. Even though it wasn't the teacher who was flaky, it was the technology in that moment, right? But they still internalized that failure.
Well, just like my audio didn't start right now, I, I feel like a fool, right? Like I've used Zoom multiple times. Why is my audio not working? And there's technical things that, um, I've likened it to everyone's a first-year teacher. Again, everyone's a first-year admin. Again, everyone's a first year. And we have to give ourselves some grace in that. And teachers and families as well, families and parents, that this is a new context. And, and we are doing the best we can and we know that we need to serve students and work on things like summer school, what Mike mentioned. We need to come up with some supports to really get students caught up that this, they're not thriving in this environment for the ones that aren't. And how to work on that and provide supports over the summer.
Okay. Thank you. That was thoughtful. I appreciate it. Appreciate the work you're doing.
Thank you. All right, that's it for me.
Thanks, Julie.
Thank you. Good information. Clarissa, the lady that was on that you, that was asking the questions about our equity work. Do you? I don't know if Lori was able to get any contact information for her or not.
I do, and I'd be happy to share that with Clarissa.
That'd be good because I think she would enjoy some information, more information and she sounded very interested. So if you don't mind, thank you.
No problem.
Okay. All right. So next up was the the conference that we all didn't go to in person for three days. So thoughts?
That keynote was revelatory.
What?
The keynote, the I am I'm not talking about the guitar player. I'm blanking on the name of the, the most important person I listened to.
I liked the guitar player.
I liked the guitar player too, but the
With the Ijoma.
Ijoma, yeah.
Yeah.
Was, uh, was like listening to a voice describe these horrific things, but the voice was this calm soothing
This is a reminder.
Just about, uh, technology. The, the voice was this, it started out so soothing and it's just like made me comfortable to listen. And then started talking about these horrific differences and, and just made me just kind of sit in awe at how effective it was getting me to listen to those things. Not that I'd be very good at 9:00 PM in recalling it all, but I did take a few dozen pages of notes on our equity pre-conference and on that keynote that I have for reference. And I have her book and I know which voice to read it in now and that's beautiful to me. That's just
Yeah, she was good. Julie, what were your takeaways?
Well, I'm with you, Victoria. Three days was a long time. Then another example of us seeing probably what it's like to, um, because I don't work from home. And so I can now understand Jenny and you know, Rachel more because I think that, you know, working from home and doing online learning, because it was online learning for us. And, you know, three days and I'm, I'm usually on, on the move all day long and so it was way different for me just to take a step back and watch a computer screen. So I know that that's not the best way that I learn. Um, so I think that WASTA did it actually an overall good job with putting the conference together. Thank you, Jenny, for being on that committee. I thought the keynotes were great, all three of them. We did the equity conference. I thought that was good overall, you know, but I, I don't know if the breakout sessions were, you know, kept me that interested throughout the, the couple of days, but, um, you know, and I think they did a good job with the closing session. I know, I know Rob was on there and I was on there too, but they did a really good job with the closing session for having it be a virtual conference. So it was just hard. It's just, it's just not the best way that I learn and I know that about myself. So, yeah.
It's a mixed bag for me. I enjoy small group in-person learning. You know, supplemented by online, it's almost like graduate studies where your classes are small, or they're supposed to be. I've been in a home office for 22 years and I still, I'm getting kind of tired of the flat screen Zoom friends. And I want to see my friends again. It's getting, it's getting old and difficult. The, when they did the breakouts, how abruptly those always end, just like you have 10 seconds to say goodbye. And it just didn't seem to be congruent with the, the import of the stuff we were talking about.
Yeah.
But, yeah, I noticed that there were fewer sessions overall and repeats and it was hard to tell whether or not you were watching the repeat. But it was also interesting to see what happens when the presenter can go uninterrupted and, and be watching their own recording and responding to questions in the chat. It's looking for, I'm just looking over my notes to see if there's anything stands out in this moment.
I like that we can go back until, like, June next year, next June to watch them because I know for me not being away. It did, you know, the responsibilities didn't stop. So even you sitting here, you know, trying to watch the breakout sessions and still having, you know, work pinging me over here and the kids over here and, you know, the other stuff over here. It was really hard sometimes to really focus. You know, and delivering kids to school or whatever. It's, so I missed quite a few, but I do like that they are replaying them. Or that they're, they've saved them so that we can go back and, and it's actually on one of my, because I, I like that we're going to be able to watch everything. Whereas when we're in person, you can only see what you can physically get to during each of those breakouts. Whereas now we have them and we can see every breakout that was available during the conference, which I do like that we can get all of that education.
Yeah.
And you moved, Victoria, you moved the whole weekend or the whole couple of days.
My moving that never ends. Rachel, any thoughts? Rachel there.
She's
She's on the lam.
I'm guessing that there's a child who's in need.
I'm guessing the same. That's fine.
I, I ended up in side conversations, I don't think I would have been in, with Cindy Kelly. Remember Cindy, Victoria? Native American school director up at Port Angeles?
Yep.
She got me thinking about land recognition statements. Give me a couple of examples and
Yeah, I've been thinking about them too.
So that ended up being sort of a side thing. I think Donna Sinclair, the Washoe Board is at least part of Native American. I don't know if she's a tribal member, but she's done some academic work at least with that intersectionality, right? And the Callets have sent me to suggest some land recognition statements and some of the Chinook folks as well. I got some connections with them. And looked in Clarissa about what I was doing so that nobody got surprised who might have probably been doing that. And it's something that I think we could be reading out in our board meetings, the way that they've been reading the Madden Wasm, in general Wasm meetings as a, as a marker of inclusion. And, and to hope that they would, like the citizens talked today beginning, continue the dialogues that we need. I wasn't able to get any people of color to advise me from the students on, on the police in the schools questions was to have. I don't have the connections. And so in the conference, that sort of like kicking the pants, if you will, about those subjects was really valuable. Really valuable. So I'll email those materials when I find them again in my cloud. That's, that's what the conference did for me was that the opportunity to just kind of go equity, equity, equity with each of the sessions and realizing that I can watch the others later. That was nice.
Yeah. Now, Mike, did you go to any of them?
Yeah, I zoomed in. No, yeah, I, I did. I, I probably wasn't, I mean, I certainly, I think for me, the thing that's difficult is when you're here. It's like what Ginny's saying, you know, there are so many things that are potential distractions and we lose from the team building that we, we would have the opportunity to have. So I did, I did listen to the guitar player play some songs. I participated in things the first day, but, but I, I wasn't clearly as connected as I would have been if we'd have been there. So I'm looking forward to the opportunity for, I mean, everybody is looking for the opportunity for things to kind of get back to normal. When you, when you have the ability to get away, you're certainly much more engaged because there aren't the distractions of things that are that never stop happening. So
Anyone else? Okay. Well, I think we're all looking forward to next year being in person. Okay. Let's see legislative updates.
Yeah, I'm not sure what Rob might have. I, I wanted to just really quickly share that tomorrow. Yeah, I'm pretty sure it's tomorrow afternoon. I'm participating in a, in a, not a Zoom, but a Microsoft Teams meeting with the folks from the, the House leadership, I believe Representative Ormsby, Sullivan and a third one. I don't remember the third one, that Monica, Representative Stonier set up for us to be able to share. It's basically myself and Vancouver, Brett and Steve a little bit, but I think Brett's going to be doing more of the conversation around enrollment, transportation, kind of explaining fund balances because I think they always hear that there's all these dollars in fund balances for, for people to be able, districts to be able to tap into. Kind of explaining how we've spent the CARES money. What we've done with respect to reductions of positions already to try to mitigate. And then also talking about our extraordinary COVID costs. So I think we've got a half an hour with them to kind of tell our story in Vancouver's. And I think Gavin may be on that as well, participating in it, kind of representing some of the smaller districts. And I appreciate Representative Sonia for setting that up and giving us the opportunity to have that direct conversation because these are three individuals that are leaders in the House Democratic Caucus and will be very influential as we move through things. So looking forward to that and hoping that that can help. And more than anything else, just kind of hoping that we kind of create this relationship. Melissa introduced me to Representative Sullivan, I think last session. And so trying to kind of build the relationship over time with folks so that we, we become a district that they go to for information and look to as a, I mean, I was, I, I felt honored because Representative Stonier, she kind of presented it as she wanted the folks in Olympia to hear from a district that's doing things the right way. And that's, that's a good thing.
That was nice.
I appreciate that. So I'll, I'll report back on that when we come back around after the first of the year and how that's, I mean, obviously I'll, I'll share with you guys through emails or whatever. So that you have a familiarity about how it went and what happened. But I think that's kind of the big thing right now. And I'm, Rob's probably got some to add. He's on, got a lot of information as well.
I, well, I think Monica's been part of creating, you know, she's been part of creating part of creating, you know, she's been part of creating the excellence that she's talking about now. And it's nice to, it's a real advantage to have somebody in that position. Also in, in our, in our district working, it's neat, I hope she does enough self-care.
Yes, I thought it was, you know, there were, I think in our legislative forum with the SD, there met, let's say there were twelve legislators and of the twelve, I think nine are Republicans and three are Democrats, and so we heard a lot of the the perspective from the Republicans in that forum. And I think Monica did a really good job at the end of that by pointing out that there are more than one perspective. There are a lot of different sides, just as we've heard tonight from parents and from, from others.
Complex interplay.
Yeah, you know, so I mean, you know, she really encouraged the consideration for for, you know, listening to the other side and trying to understand. And understanding that it's just a very difficult time that we deal with and if we only listen to those that support us, that, you know, it will be no different than any other, half the people think one thing, half the people. I guarantee you, there isn't one decision that we don't make that maybe forty percent of the people agree with, forty percent of the people disagree with, and the other twenty percent just think we're stupid no matter what we do. So it's just, this time is very difficult.
That's something that's on my mind, secondary traumas are on my mind, what it's going to be like to get it all back together. And how kids are going to respond differently, it's just good to hear from Julie today about how they're preparing for that. That moment. And thinking of ways to help teachers, I wanted to, I guess, point out legislatively that in addition to the context that we have, there was a misunderstanding with Representative Berquist. Came through the lobbyist last year, well, his wife is now on the Wasum Legislative Committee. So I'm about to meet virtually somebody new and hope that there's some good professional relationships that we can establish there. We don't have a, we don't have a story of need that's very different from any other large district in the state. The same funding shortfalls and pressures are inflicting us as much as they are Seattle or North Shore or any other big ones, so we've got a good common story to tell. But I think what we have is, like I said, kind of pleading with everybody is we have a great need to coordinate, there are lots of common points between Wasum, Waspo, Wasum and WEA at the state level. And they'll need to be singing the same songs, because even if the projections are getting into the shortfall range, we still have shortage on special education and we need to tell that story. Mandates that don't come with funding, because those things, even if they're doing fewer bills, those things are going to be pressures on us. And I need help this year more than anything not to not to try and do all the things, if you know what I mean, so if you're willing to gather some students or supply remote testimony for a committee and you can make space for that, I would really appreciate it, we need to we need to be coherent and needs to come in more voices than just one white male, you know what I mean?
And I think we'll work through Melissa and any opportunities we have, we'll make sure that we, we make sure we get folks available to support whatever we need to have. Make any kind of testimony that we can.
Yeah, and she's going to be really instrumental. As long as we can just keep the messages synchronized. I don't want to be accident and stepping on anybody's toes this session, it's still important.
Yeah, we'll talk before we get together exactly how we'll do that, but I would imagine we'll just have a weekly meeting.
That's perfect. To start with, I, nobody knows, it's so much uncertainty about the whole session. But it sounds like they've chosen Microsoft Teams. So at least there's.
That's what we're using tomorrow, yeah.
Well, I'm pretty sure the district has a license for Microsoft Teams. Aside from that, the big issues, the SRO thing is going to get a bill. So we need to be thinking about how to characterize that and be sure that the student voices from our groups of color are put out in front, because those are where the fears are coming from, by interviews with the white students that I was able to talk with means that they're thoughtful, but they're also not afraid of uniformed police officers, they're just not, they were trained to treat them as, as I was, you know, policemen who can help you. There is going to be a lot of talk about transportation, a lot of talk about internet access, so if we have stories like the one that that Derek told me this week about Centurion not even bidding on the new schools. And ending up with a small business connection that blew up in our faces when when all the teachers at the school needed two hundred megabits instead of forty, and actually more than that for making videos and doing the live classes. Folks need to know about that, so that when the telcos come along and resist PUDs doing internet and other new authorities that they're going to propose, that we've got we've got these counter narratives, because internet's not serving kids. And it's nobody's fault in the system, this is how it grew over time and it needs to be different, it needs to be utility. And we're going to need help delivering that message in a way that we've never been opposed for before.
And even for our families that, you know, maybe have the access, okay, so for speaking from my own personal experience, I just paid almost a hundred dollars more for my internet bill this month because you can change your speed and your downloads information, but they still only allow you so much every month, and if you go over that, you're paying ten bucks for, or whatever it is, for every little bit of it, and when you've got three kids on multiple devices, and I mean, even right now, I'm sitting here on two different computers and my iPad and it's, I mean, I'm running low on my data two weeks almost before the end of the month is that. And there's no way to get more. So it's just frustrating, because even when the one, you know, even our families that have it, like, I don't not everybody can afford an extra hundred dollar on their cable bill or their internet bill because the internet companies aren't giving any leeway.
That profit margin on, it's a hundred percent profit.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, the costs are half what they charge you.
And they don't tell you when you buy your package, they just tell you, well, how many people do you have in your house? Oh, well, you need this much download speed or this much bandwidth. But it has, there's nothing ever said about you only getting to use one thousand, whatever it's called, every month. And once you go over that, they start to charge you.
Went over the one point two terabytes.
Yes, that's what it is, yeah, which I'm sure a lot of people are right now, because everybody's home and on the internet. So I just, they're, they're making a killing off of the, you know, unfortunate circumstances, even though they're saying, oh, we're giving discounts. Well, yeah, but you're still not allowing additional usage, which everybody is using way more than they used to right now. I was kind of frustrated the other day when I got that bill, can you tell?
Yeah, I've been, when my daughters moved to Bellingham, they qualify for the ten dollar Internet Essentials, the one that we advertise to our families. If they qualify for services, they can have twenty-five megabits of internet per month. But they were, I've been doing this internet stuff for thirty years, I tell people I've been on social media for thirty years, which is actually true. But it, it just, the frictions involved in getting low income to prove, you got to prove you're low income in order to get twenty-five megabits and you can still go over the terabyte with that speed, you just have a trap ahead of you. One way is to disable four K movies, then four people shouldn't go over all of that stuff. Who knew that? Nobody knows that, you have to be technically adept and even then you can get trapped. They were without internet at the beginning of a college semester, learning remotely for three, four days. Just because it was hard to get in the first place. And you think about when you think about that kid in the Union area, the family in the Union area where there is no coverage at all and they're affluent. And that's the story around the Capitol in Olympia, it's the story around the state. Doesn't have to be rural, it just has to be where they don't want to put the last mile yet. So, yeah, there's a lot of passion around that, and maybe that can turn into something more, you know, whistle for everybody, at least in the state, if we work together on it. Yeah.
I'll let you know how the meeting goes tomorrow.
Appreciate you.
Okay.
It's just a plea for help and the things.
Just let us know, Rob, we'll, we'll help any way we can.
Will do.
Okay. Ginny, do you want to do the debrief real quick?
I've got one more thing on there, the, I want to have Sue share what happened at the city council, Vancouver City Council yesterday. It was wonderful for Mayor McInerney will come and meet with us, but I don't think that they helped us yesterday around impact fees, so I think Sue's still on here, I'm going to ask Sue to share some information.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I'm here, so several months ago, we received a letter, it's actually the development that is just north of where the new ASC is going to be, the Asero Park side. And talked to the developer regarding protesting payment of our impact fees. You guys may remember, our last capital facilities plan was passed in two thousand fifteen through twenty twenty-one, a six-year plan. The, you go through a process, the, you guys, we worked through it in the early spring, usually in April or May. The board approves the impact fees, we submit it to the city. We go through the Planning Commission and the City Council in Clark County, Camas and City of Vancouver to get buy-in from their board and then the City of Vancouver typically adopts our new fees in January of the following year, so that last plan was adopted in January of two thousand sixteen. When we passed the bond, we updated our capital facilities plan because several of the elements changed within the plan. And granted, they don't really impact the fee, what changed the fee was we had a lot fewer kids coming out of apartment complexes than we did right after the recession. But either way, we updated our plan because our capacity changed a little bit. Adding the new school, you know, our financial plan changed. But really, the primary impact of the fees reducing is that we have fewer students living in apartments. Anyway, that plan was two thousand nineteen through twenty twenty-five. It was adopted in January of twenty twenty. And so the city's ordinance, they have an ordinance about the collection of impact fees, school impact fees, park impact fees, traffic impact fees. Their ordinance establishes the timing of when impact fees are calculated, which for multifamily residences at site plan approval or subdivision plat approval. And so essentially what two developers, the Asero Park and then Kestrel, which I think is over in the Fifth Plain Creek neighborhood, it's a Hurley development. They both developed, they both submitted letters to protest impact fees, we'd had conversations with the city regarding this over the last six months or so. But I heard from, actually I heard from the developer that the city was going to be having a hearing about it tonight, so I requested a copy of you know, the resolution, the staff report, any information, didn't get it, I was out a couple of days last week and found out from someone at the city that, hey, you might want to know about this item on the agenda. So I went, and of course, there's the resolution for the city to approve the reduction of our impact fees. And I've been pretty vocal, Mike's been copying on most of the emails with the city. Essentially what they're doing, we've been an advocate for the city to revise their ordinance so that fees are calculated at the time of building permit. Because that's really when the fees are more applicable. The way it is now, those fees, the original fees were adopted in January of two thousand sixteen and they're essentially allowed to vest, so it could be three to five years, time passes from the time that site plan approval is to the time that they pay the fees. The city felt that, and wrote a staff report feeling that that the developer, if the developer could demonstrate that the fees were inaccurate at the time that they were calculated, that they could go ahead and, you know, get a reduction in the fee. We kind of argued that you can't have your cake and eat it too, either you make them all do at the time of building, you know, calculate a building permit, or you do it the other way, but you can't have it both ways, and so in some, I agree with the development community that fees that are, you know, that our two thousand sixteen fees were no longer relevant, things changed, we updated our plan, but we followed the city's ordinance and it's really an issue with the city's ordinance, it's not an issue with the district. When it first came up, the city pushed the developers back to us and said, hey, this is your problem, you guys change your plan, you guys deal with it. And we said, no, we don't have the authority to deal with it per the ordinance, it's really the ordinance that's driving the conflict and, which puts us into a kind of a compromised position. Anyway, long story short, we've kind of gone back and forth, I did get ahold of our attorney last night and let them know of this problem, there are more than one developer that will now pursue a reduction in fee, if all they have to do is write a letter to the city council and say Evergreen screwed up on their fees, that the fees say that the formula did not accurately reflect school impact fees, it's not reasonable, related to potential impacts. The fees were excessive, did not accurately reflect actual school impact, I mean, it's, that's what I protested with the city that it that's not what happened, we followed the ordinance, we did the update as we're supposed to do when things change. It's really the city's ordinance that determines the timing of the collection of the fee, or the calculation of the fees. In hindsight, there may be a silver lining, ironically, last night, the city manager presented to council the idea of getting rid of vesting in their ordinance. They're not talking together, because the guy that I deal with in community development didn't, didn't know that the city manager was presenting it, in fact, I found out today through the grapevine that the city manager didn't know that the vesting was on the docket last night either, so there's just like everyone else, people are working from home, they're not always communicating really well, there's a lot of other stuff going on in the world, so there's little disconnects there, and I will find out from our attorney what our best steps are moving forward, but I think the kind of silver lining is that everybody agreed at the council meeting last night, that developers should pay the fee that's closest to when the project is built, which would be at the building permit. And so I think that if that helps us move this forward, because that's all documented and recorded and everybody agreed with it, if that helps us move it forward so that fees are not allowed to vest and sit for three to five years, then maybe there's a silver lining and it could be a good thing. That's how the ordinance for City of Camas and Clark County both are calculated at the time of building permit, so. It's a pretty significant difference, I think it's one point seven million dollars. One million seven hundred and two thousand nine hundred and forty-four dollars, because the multifamily fee went down by almost four thousand dollars. Ironically, and I looked in our tracking report, we don't track the developers, but I believe that Ironically, and I, I looked in our tracking report, we don't track the developers, but I believe that Hurley, who submitted the multifamily reduction, also has single-family projects going on. The single-family fee went up by $332, but of course, there's no protest about those fees. So, and, and that's the whole point is, you know, you, you can't, you can't have your cake and eat it too. We should not allow developers to pick and choose which fees they get to pay. And frustrating, really frustrating that the city didn't let, let us know, let me know that they were having a hearing in regards to it. So I'll learn more tomorrow with our attorney and kind of let you know what some options are, how we might pursue it.
Just wanted to kind of update you that there was a little bit of a, a little bit of a change in the way things have done and, and that it happened kind of strangely and we'll keep you, we'll keep you in the loop.
Mike, if we end up discussing this, is it a closed session kind of thing? Sounds like it might end up in a legal
If we get to that point, yeah. We'll see how it all develops.
Okay.
You know, we've always had a really good relationship with the city. They've been a good counterpart and I did not, at the testimony last night, I did not, and I kind of regret, did not tell council that I wasn't notified of the meeting because I'm trying to respect that relationship and I, I just think there's some, some things, I mean, I think it's going on like you guys have been talking about all evening. There's just a lot of weirdness in the world and anxiety and other things. And I try to be respectful of, of what other people have. I think people are busy, people are disconnected from working from home and I do think that good things will come out of it. If we can get the city to change their ordinance to calculate fees at the time of building permit and then it's consistent throughout. Do you guys have any questions at all?
I don't have a question, but I do have a comment and it may or may not apply and it's fine. We don't have to get into a big discussion, but I don't want us to get into a position where that we were at a number of years ago when building was just going rampant through and we don't get our, we don't get our money for, to build new schools until we pass a bond and we have unhoused students, you know, to qualify for state portion. Bless you. And and we would write letters saying we are over capacity, blah, blah, blah. But as long as we didn't say stop, don't do it, which we're not allowed to do. We were in a no win situation and I don't want us to get into a situation again where developers are starting to do the end run and develop every inch of space and then we're not getting the impact fees that we need when we need them. And so that's the thing I want us to watch out for because you know how that was.
Yep. So we do write a letter when we get notified of new developments and we constantly, with all of the jurisdictions, we have to, Rayling goes on the websites and looks up, you know, what's been approved. Normally we get notification of it and we, we track them, the kind of developments they were talking about at Fisher's Landing tonight. There were not ones that are on our list. So it makes me a little bit nervous about not being notified. But I have included in the letters that we send because I think there's a disconnect. They think, you know, two developments, 1.7 million dollars, that's a lot of money. But when you look at what that pays for new construction and the amount of the bond, it's really less than 2% of the total cost of, of our projects. So it's really a pretty small drop in the bucket when you look at what it costs to build a school these days. And we try to, I, I think that was, for me, that was kind of the win out of the meeting last night was aligning the developers are, you know, yeah, we, we shouldn't pay that old fee. It wasn't applicable. We should pay the fee that's applicable at the building permit. When you go to, and that's why the city has pushed back on changing that and eliminating vesting because most developers want to get the fees that are three years old because typically the fees go up. In our case, the fees went down. And there's all kinds of case law around development pushing back on fee calculation at building permit because typically they go up. So it'll be interesting to see where this goes and what comes of it. I'm hoping that we can work with the city to help them kind of push for and advocate for amending their ordinance so that it aligns with the other jurisdictions and truly does have impacts closer to the time of development.
Well, thank you, Sue.
Yeah.
Anything else, Mike?
No, that's it.
Okay, Ginny, do your thing.
Okay, so the board meeting debrief. I will try to get this through this really quick, but I do want to make note that we do have someone that wants to speak to us. Rob, were you?
Yeah, Bill put in a comment about wanting to have a minute or less to thank some people who worked on the middle high school schedule. Might I go to read that aloud, Victoria, or you could let him talk. It's up to you.
When does he want to talk to us?
He wants one minute or less presently. He asked about 9:00 PM when we started the workshop. The equity update and
I don't know, are we able to even make him go live so he can talk?
I don't know. But it's thanks to people, if I read it aloud here, it's thanks to people who worked on the middle and high school schedule discussion. And I don't know if there's more that you wanted to say, but it sounded like you wanted a long time to say it.
Okay. I guess we, we can do that if we can get him on.
Oh, there he is.
Okay. Hey, Bill.
Mainly it's just to show you that I actually can work the tech every once in a while. I, I did ask for just a minute to think, we had a one of the things I just wanted to be grateful for as I look around the state and I talk to my colleagues, it's, it is quite a privilege that we do negotiate things together. When we come to tough decisions, we had a, we were at a bit of a standstill with the middle school, high school schedule. And so Janay helped put together a group where we could talk about some of the impacts of what the MOU said and what the possible outcomes could be in problem solving. So all I wanted to say is just thank you for the opportunity. I, I was able to bring three teachers with me. I brought Adrian Campbell, Chris Sigman and Michelle Berg to bring about their perspectives. And I just wanted to thank Janay and Tracy, Tracy Thompson, Aaron Lucic, Bill Omen, Julie was, Julie Tamulty was there. And just the fact that we're able to negotiate through these things, I was able to take that interpretation to my executive board and it was passed unanimously so that we can move forward with the scheduling. And I, I just wanted to be grateful for the opportunity that we do get to negotiate these things at the table. And I, as I talk to my colleagues around the state, not everybody gets that opportunity. So I just wanted to give thanks for that. That's it.
Thank you, Bill. Okay, go ahead, Ginny.
All right, so we are at almost a quarter to 10. So I realized that it has been longer than an hour this time. So I won't say that. Lost track of time apparently last meeting. I think everything went fairly well. It was a very long beginning portion of our meeting, but we heard from a lot of people regarding the boundary changes and it's always good to, to hear comments and concerns because we do get a lot of emails. So you can't always hear the passion in the emails. So being able to hear them is always great as well. Great transition, Julie and Vic, from one president into the next. So I'm assuming you guys kind of planned that before. So you guys did an amazing job transitioning that. So thank you. Other than that, I don't have anything else. Everything went fairly well. Anybody have any comments on tonight's meeting?
There was no, there was no plan. Victoria's just a pro. She just took it.
You guys did good, especially in the online world.
Given the huge amount of content that we covered tonight, it's ending earlier than it could have.
We're not done yet, but
Well, yeah.
We're not, so we can wrap it up.
Yeah, right.
Yeah, Brian and Julie and the content that they gave us and a way to drill in later on. Yeah.
Okay, so I think that we're good to go. And we will transition into an executive session. I think we have to re-sign in for that and then we'll just come right back. Is that okay with everyone?
Yep.
Yep, we'll go into the other link. Night.
See ya. Thanks, everybody.
Have a good evening, everyone.